Test, test. It's, it's working?
Yeah.
Okay. No, it stays red.
That's what I mean.
Okay.
We're gonna start in one minute.
Brian. Can't connect, what's going on?
I'm not wearing the tie, didn't want to make Brian feel uncomfortable is what it was, I wanted him to feel better.
Yes. I've never seen Brian in a tie, never will. Probably never wear a tie. I'm not wearing it.
Well, I would say although I did bring one.
City staff.
Should just put on your off.
Yeah, really.
Don't take mine off.
Let's go to city staff, why don't we just go there? Connect, I don't know.
There's something in the water today, it's not just me.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I, 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 that's something on my phone where they actually go and kind of like. Well, that's right, in one minute. All right, we're gonna call this meeting for, uh.
This is, this is the city council meeting of May 21st, 2024, and we are beginning with the budget workshop. And we will note that all council members are present at four o'clock PM. With that, this is the presentation of the fiscal years 2024 to 25 and 25, 26 city budget workshop presentation by financial manager, finance manager Ron and administrative services director Brower concerning the city of San Clemente proposed fiscal years 2024 to 25 and 25 to 26 budgets.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Brian Brower, administrative services director, we're gonna start off with a presentation that's going to be kicked off by our city manager, Andy Hall.
Thank you, council members. First off, I really want to thank everybody who helped us put this budget together. As you know, we asked the council, or the staff to do kind of a two-year job in one year. And we've created a two-year budget for the city council for their consideration for fiscal years 25 and 26. Basically, we'll begin July 1st of 2024, go through June 30th of 2026. You can move to the next slide. First thing we wanted to talk about a little bit is the timeline for adoption of the budget. As you know, we've been working on the budget for several months. We have the budget workshop tonight, and then we're excited to announce the first budget open house that we're gonna have in the community. Everyone is welcome to attend. Every department will have a display at that, at that event, including the fire department will have fire trucks there, and the sheriffs will have different things to, to show off, and, and every department will be able to talk to everybody about what's happening in their department because again, lots of times there aren't a lot of questions about the budget and the numbers, but yet every question that's asked of you is usually a budget question. Has something to do with financing, can we afford to do this, can we afford to do that? So we want to give the public a chance to come out, interact with the staff, ask questions, because in, in essence, almost every question asked is a budget question. And then we will have the official public hearing for the budget on June 4th, followed by city council consideration and adoption. But we did want to talk a little bit about what a budget is, maybe what it is not, and we'll move through this relatively quickly. I know the city council is familiar with a lot of this information. We have briefed each one of you individually and gotten some information and feedback from each of you. But the budget is not just a financial document, it does include the financial resources of the city, but it's really more of a policy document that links the city council priorities, the community priorities, and the resources that we have to implement those priorities. And remember that this is an estimate, this is our best guess, things do change over time, sometimes we may get grants, sometimes we may get other financial benefit that we get from, from some of our partners, or there may be expenses that we, that are unanticipated, like the landslide at Cassero Mantico, for example. So it is, there are policies and procedures that the city council can amend this budget when, when necessary. So I just wanted to start real quickly on a, just a narrative about the budget story and kind of what's happening in our community right now, and why it feels like our general fund is a little tighter than, than it has been in the past, and why it gets a little bit tighter every year. So there has been some, a couple of significant revenue sources that are no longer available to the city that have helped the city in the past. The redevelopment agency was here, a lot of work was done in the Pier Bowl area with the redevelopment agency, maintenance of the pier, some of the improvements that were made in the trails and along the pier, and some of those kinds of things were done with the redevelopment agency and paid for with tax increment, they did not come out of the general fund. And we also had the Clean Ocean Fund, I think all of you remember the Clean Ocean Fund, that was a, a fee that was passed by the residents, it was put into a separate fund, and that took care of a lot of things like street sweeping, storm drainage, and other issues to keep water quality in the ocean as clear, as clean as possible. So, so we lost about five million, five and a half million dollars of revenue to the general fund by losing those two funding sources. And at the same time, that work had to continue. We still had to continue to maintain the pier to the extent that we could, we still had to do street sweeping and, and water quality. So they were additional impacts on the expenses on the general fund at the same time as the loss of revenues in the general fund. So it's important to understand that there have been some pressures on the general fund in the last decade or so, and they're starting to come to fruition now, right? The, the pier now has had some deferred maintenance, and, and it's beginning to show. In the first couple of years, you don't notice as much, but, but that's beginning to show. The other thing we wanted to talk to, to you about is our community structure, and I know a lot of people raise questions about how this, the city structure has worked, and, and this slide shows it very well. First, we have neighboring cities, for instance, like Dana Point that decided early on they wanted to be more of a tourist-type community, they have some very large resorts, and they generate a lot of TOT. So for a fairly small community, they raise about nineteen million dollars in TOT, we raise about three and a half. So that's just some comparisons. A, the other city next to us, and you know, we always compare ourselves against our neighbors, is the San Juan Capistrano. They decided early on they were kind of more of a sales tax city, they do have a Costco, they have car dealerships, and they decided they wanted to be kind of, if you will, an economic center, and they, they generate, even though they're much smaller than us, they generate about the same amount of sales tax as we do in our community. But what's important to our community, and I think our residents still feel this way, and I think we're very proud of it, is we wanted to be what some people would refer to as a bedroom community, what I would say is, we wanted to be a community of neighborhoods. We wanted to be a community of families and residential areas, more so than we wanted to be either a resort community or a retail center, and, and we have held to that tradition, and it has made San Clemente such a great place, and I think that that's important. But you can see here in the bottom slide on the left, that most, because we're a bedroom community, a large percentage of our revenues come from our property tax. And then you can see the other taxes there, there's, there's a, there's a nice little chunk from sales tax, and then after you get, get through that, there aren't a lot of other revenues that come into the city. And our expenditures, as you can see on the right-hand slide, a majority of our expenditures are in public safety and public works. Public safety, I think, is pretty expla, explain, self-explanatory. Public works is really the maintenance side of our city, maintaining roads, maintaining parks, maintaining those, those other facilities in the community, and that's why that's so high. You can see the rest of the government probably combined isn't even as large as public works, let alone public safety. So really what is important to our residents in the past, and they've made it really clear, is we want to be a safe community, and we want it to be well-maintained. That's been reflected in the budget, and I think that that's really important. So we wanted to talk about, a little bit about the budget, where we are today, and then maybe talk about some of the future opportunities that we have towards the end of the presentation, but I really want to thank both Brian and Jake and their entire teams. This, this is not just a, a one-year budget, and then you add 2% to it, and it was easy to put together a two-year budget. They literally put together two one-year budgets and went through the line items in each budget for each year, and so they did double the, the amount of work. I started to think of them as roommates, we were here late at night sometimes and early in the morning, but I, I really appreciated how hard they worked, and it was really a, a great experience to go through with them and see how dedicated they are to getting it right, to making sure every number was correct in every line item, so I really appreciate their attention to detail. And I'll turn some time over to Brian.
Thank you, Andy. I'd also like to take a moment to thank all the department heads and their staff for spending the, the time that it took to pull this budget together and to, to meet with Jake and I and the city manager to, to balance things out and to make refinements to the budget through the process.
Sorry, I'm getting an imagery of Andy tucking you guys in at the end of the night after, after a long day of budgeting.
Let's try to erase that from the record. Okay, so first we want to talk about some of the key elements in budget preparation. One of the first things that went into the budget process is trying to make sure that we maintain current service levels, and I should say maintain or improve ser, service levels, so everything you see in the budget that's before you maintains at least the services that we're priding, providing today with the, the numbers of staff that are providing them. We also place an emphasis on this, in this budget, on employee recruitment and retention. As you're well aware, we adopted and enacted a classification and compensation study over the last few months, so this budget includes a full year of the costs associated with those measures. As Andy mentioned, the department budgets were reviewed line by line by staff, we literally went through and, and looked at every account number in every department and division budget. And after those review sessions, several departments went back to the drawing board, made further refinements before creating what we have before you today. So we often get the question, are, are we healthy, are our fund balances healthy, are our reserves healthy? The answer is yes, the general fund emergency reserves are fully funded in this budget, and other fund reserves are, are funded as well. Through our budget discussions, we often focus on the general fund, this is where the majority of discretionary spending takes place for the city. The general fund has a positive operating position for both of the upcoming budget years. A hundred and six thousand dollars, almost a hundred and seven in fiscal year 2025, and then a hundred and twenty-six in 2026. Again, this is maintaining existing service levels and enhancing a few things based on city council priorities. Emergency reserves are fully funded, they've actually increased over the budget period by about a million dollars, keeping with city fiscal policy which mandates eighteen percent of operating expenditures being held in reserve in the general fund. General fund revenues are stable, as Andy pointed out, we're a bedroom community, we, we largely rely on property tax for our general fund revenues, and those, those are steadily growing over the budget period, we've budgeted in 5% growth approximately for each of the two years. We've also budgeted in approximately 2% growth in sales tax each year. And other than that, our general fund revenues are largely flat, our TOT is flat, franchise fees appear to be flat, service charges, interest and rents, all those things are relatively unchanged over the period. Looking at general fund expenditures, focusing a little bit on personnel costs, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we, we've implemented the classification and compensation study, we've also added three full-time positions in this budget. One being an emergency services officer, and the other being two park rangers, one each year through the budget period. So for the first year, we'll have an additional full-time park ranger, the second year of the budget, we'll have two new full-time park rangers. Some other highlights include contractual costs. As, as the, the, the chart shows here, public safety is a big part of our contractual costs as well as public works, which is really a reflection of maintenance services contracts going up over the budgeted period. We often get asked about our fund balance and our emergency reserves, the emergency reserve for the first year is fifteen million dollars, followed by fifteen and a half million in 2026. We, we also get asked, where does discretionary spending come from, or, or where do we pay for one-time costs? So outside of our operating budget, which is ongoing revenues and our routine expenditures, we pay for one-time costs typically out of fund balance, and we do that not from where our reserves are, but from the unassigned portion of that fund balance. And that fund balance tends to get replenished each year after each budget cycle because we return unexpended revenues to fund balance. And we also usually, because we budget conservatively at this city, we typically have revenues come in a little bit better than we budget, so that also returns to fund balance. Those, those surpluses that end up in fund, fund balance are rolled over to the next year and then can be used for one-time expenditures such as capital, capital improvements and, and studies. Shifting gears to capital improvement, the, the next few slides talk about our CIP program, but first, I, I want to mention something because there's been some things brought to our attention in the last couple of days about some confusion with our capital improvement program projects. Included in the proposed budget are a number of large schedules that show a number of projects. And many of these projects are shown as being budgeted in outlying years, and we want to clarify to the community and to the council that the items that are budgeted or identified as having a cost in fiscal year 24, 25, or 25, 26 are funded in this budget before you tonight. The subsequent years are not funded, funding is to be determined for those items, those items are on the list because either staff identified them as being an important improvement to make for our infrastructure, or perhaps they're items that have been mentioned by the community or the council over the years. This, these schedules are in no way intended to be a reflection of prioritization of these projects or guaranteed funding of these projects. So we, we actually intend to make some changes to the format of the document to better reflect these facts to avoid community confusion as we bring the, the final budget forward in a couple of weeks, I just wanted to bring this up to, to help, to help clear up any confusion. Some highlights for capital improvement in the general fund in the upcoming budget include improvements for street maintenance and funding for facilities maintenance, we have funding for a replacement of the pedestrian audible warning system, also for the sand compatibility and opportunistic use program, the scoop, scoop permit that we are, we're already working on, the local hazard mitigation plan, as well as design of a potential repair of the Mariposa Bridge. These images show capital improvement over the last 10 years and, and, and what our spending has been patterned after, and, and this is actually for new projects in all funds. There's also maintenance in other projects that add to these numbers, but you can see over time, it kind of goes up and down, we've had a couple of really big years based on some really large projects in the past, and for the current year, we're spending about fourteen point three and thirteen point five million in the upcoming budget cycle. Some CIP highlights from other funds include the, the Vista Hermosa Meadows development, so an expansion of our parks, also some playground equipment investments, a new artificial turf at La Pata Vista Hermosa, reconstruction of the slope up above the Linda Lane pump station, some streets projects, recycled water expansion, runoff reclamation project at Pochy, and also reservoir number five A replacement. With that, I'll hand it back to Andy to talk about some coastal improvements and challenges and solutions that we're looking to.
Yep, thank you, Brian. So the city council asked us to consider a few other things as, as priorities as we move forward as a community, some of those being a more concentrated effort on the coast to bring sand, specifically to bring sand to the coast, but other improvements that make our waterfront as, as the, the most it can possibly be. And so I wanted to talk a little bit of the, about that, and then also the idea of implementing a 115 trust account for our unfunded accrued liability. So one of the things we've looked at is, what would it really cost if we wanted to have a beachfront? What would it really cost if we wanted to have a, a full sand beach like you might see in, say, Newport Beach, or perhaps Huntington Beach? What, what, what does that cost, what would that look like? And so one of the things we want to do is make sure that we continue the funding for the Army Corps project. Now, remember that we only had to pay a small portion of that, fifteen percent this first time around, excuse me. But in coming years, every, about every six years or so, we're obligated to pay fifty percent of the cost of providing that project. And so about four or five years from now, we're gonna need to come up with about another ten million dollars for that project. So you're probably looking at about two or three million dollars a year we need to be putting away so that we can continue the Army Corps project. In addition to that, we want to take advantage of some other areas that are not covered by the Army Corps project. We still need to get sand on areas such as North Beach, we need to get sand down south, there's, there's, there's more than just T Street to Linda Lane that needs sand in our community, and that's gonna probably cost a couple million dollars a year. And I think the city council has begun to see how expensive it is, the sand is free, it's fantastic, everybody wants to give you sand. But right now, we are looking at getting about twenty thousand cubic yards of sand from the Orange County parks, and just to ship it here and move it around on our beach for that twenty thousand cubic yards, which, which again, for a matter of scale, what we're doing with the Army Corps project is two hundred and fifty-one thousand cubic yards, for, so for about 10% of that, it's gonna cost us about seven hundred thousand dollars. So you can, you can add up a couple of million dollars pretty quick when you start putting sand on your beach, but I do believe it is something that the city council wants to see, we want to concentrate on having very sustainable beaches, very nice beaches, that, we are a beach community, that's what we are known for, that's what our residents love, so we understand that that's a priority, so we want to give the council some idea of the scale of the cost of that. We also have some slope retention that we need to do on a pretty regular basis, I think you saw that we are looking at the slope retention near Linda Lane for the, for the, the lift station in that location. This year in the budget, there's a million and a half dollars to build some protection around that, that lift station. So we know that we have these continual sloughing and landslides that we need to work with, and that's probably annually at least, about a half a million dollars. But then potentially, when you have things like Cassero Mantico, you can add up several million dollars very quickly, where that project's a little north of eight million dollars to fix Cassero Mantico. So those kind of projects can get expensive in a hurry. We do need to start to get serious about pier maintenance, there's a lot of deferred maintenance on the pier, I know that you've seen that. We need to make sure that we are, that's iconic, when people think about San Clemente, they think about the pier. And everybody, all of us go out on that air, out on the pier, and it's, it's a really important thing in our community, but it's, it is expensive to maintain, the marine environment takes a toll on everything, including the pier, and so we need about a million dollars per year to take care of the pier. Then of course, we have the clean ocean activities which include the street sweeping, take, maintaining our storm drainage, so the storm drainage doesn't go directly into the ocean. Some of those kinds of things are really important, and that used to be taken care of with this, the ocean, the clean ocean fee. And so we need somewhere in the neighborhood of about ten million dollars a year. And so people have, have, have come up with all kinds of different ways, you've seen our budget, to cut ten million dollars out of our budget this year, you likely have to be in either the public works or the public safety, so either ma, maintenance of the community or public safety, I don't think that that is what our residents want. So I would suggest to you, when you have new expenses in the budget that you haven't had before, you may have to consider new, new resources, new, new sources of revenue. So people want to understand what kind of, what's the order of magnitude there. The, the city, basically, when you talk about sales tax, for example, the first one that's listed there, people pay seven and a half cents of every dollar to sales tax, the city gets one cent of that. But cities can add to that if they want for funding purposes, and about a third of the cities in, in Orange County have a cities in Orange County have added-on sales tax. And if we were to add one penny to our sales tax, it would basically double the sales tax we bring in now. That's an estimated between 13 and 14 million dollars. So that would cover not only the things that we need to do at the beach, but it may help us offset some of those public safety costs that are growing very quickly. So that's one option. But there are a lot of options. There are, perhaps we could look at TOT. One of the challenges we have there is we don't have a lot of TOT in our community. We don't have a lot of big hotels. But maybe we need to get some of them built. Maybe we need to clear the path, and we need to get serious about economic development and see what we can do to increase the number of hotel rooms we have in the community. We could look at reinstating the Clean Ocean Fee. That was passed by the residents several times before we let that lapse. It would probably have to be increased from what it was in the past. In the past, it generated about $2.3 million. That was very helpful. Probably wouldn't do all the things that we're hearing the community and the council say would be priorities for them. We are looking for grants, and we can't do a lot of things in this city without grants, and so we will constantly be looking for that. The last item has been brought up by several people. Should there be an assessment district for those people that live in the coastal areas? One of the things we're finding is that it's not just the people that live near the coast in San Clemente that identify with the coast. Almost everybody who lives in this community considers themselves living in a beach community. They go to the beach. They consider themselves living in a coastal community. So it's probably a community-wide benefit. So while an assessment district may be attractive to other people in the community, it certainly would be less attractive to those that live right along the coast. And we can go to the next slide. I've talked about the RDA and whatnot. But I did want to switch real quickly and at least have some discussion about our unfunded accrued liability. I hope you'll follow me on this chart a little bit. But right now, as was mentioned by Brian, we have a healthy emergency fund balance of about... In the coming year, it'll be 15 million. The year after that will be about 15 and a half million. And that's great. The problem is, we have all that right now invested in Chandler or LEAF, which is the Local Agency Investment Fund at the state. So the state is LEAF, and then we have a private financial consultant that helps us invest the other funds, but they are limited in how those funds can be invested. They have to be very, very safe, very liquid. So it's usually short-term investments. We need to be able to get to that cash quickly. But we're using that for long-term emergency funding. On a good year, and by the way, this would be a spectacular year. I think most of you are familiar with, we never get quite to 2% in LEAF or Chandler. But I'm saying in one of our, one of the fantastic banner years, we may get to 2%, which would generate about $80,000 in revenue for, or in dividends for us. In a Section 115, which, there's really two large ones in the state. There's one that's put out by PARs, and there's one put out by CalPERS. Even CalPERS has a 115 option. And in a 115 trust, we would take our own money. We would put that in the trust, and we would hope that we would earn at least the discount rate that they are charging at CalPERS, which is 6.8% over a 40-year horizon. We think we could beat that. CalPERS has some very significant investment restrictions of what they can invest in, and we probably would have fewer than those. It would be up to the city council whether or not you wanted to do any of those social investing restrictions, or whether you'd want us to try and maximize the return on our money. But if we could earn the discount rate, that would end up with $272,000 in dividends. So if you were to look at that, and let's say we run a five-year scenario there, and with the compounding, after year five, you would end up in that account at $5.2 million. You could send $1.2 million to CalPERS as a prepayment. You would still have your original principal of $4 million. And that is the, even CalPERS is kind of encouraging cities to do that, and they have even created a 115 trust so that people could do that. So I hope that the city council has already directed us to look at a 115. It's already gone to our finance committee. They are very supportive of it. But we would certainly look for direction from the city council on this item that you would like us to further direct this. On the previous item, I do want to point out to the city council, I think you're aware, there's a survey going throughout the community right now about how our residents feel about whether or not they would be willing to increase their tax, their sales tax, to have more sand on the beach. We will have the results of that survey very soon. We will make it very public in this meeting so that the public deserves to know what the survey results are. And so we'll make sure that we will share that with you very soon in a city council meeting. So we're not looking for direction on that just yet, but we are looking maybe for some direction on whether or not to get serious about and perhaps invest some of our emergency funds into a 115 trust. Now, should point out, you say, well, what's emergency funds? What if we have an emergency? We wouldn't want to invest more than one year of our regular CalPERS payments and our UAL payments because if we needed to, the only thing you can use for a 115 trust account for, the only thing it can be used for is pension obligations. So we don't want to put more than one year in there because if we needed that in case of an emergency, if we had three Cassero Manticas happen in one year, we want to be able to access that capital. And the only way we could do that is to pay our CalPERS portion of the, out of the 115 section, Section 115 trust account. So I know that that was a lot of chicken noodle soup or alphabet soup put in there, but I did want to make sure that the city council knew that we're taking that seriously. We were directed to do that, and I think we're very bullish on getting a 115 trust account going. So with that, I think that that ends our presentation and at least of the high-level things that have been included in the budget. And we would be very open to any questions that the public has or the city council has it so that we can prepare the final budget for your consideration on June 4th, maybe the 5th if you don't pass it on the 4th. We have to have a special meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
We do have public comments. Amanda Q., followed by Kelly Leclerc with the Downtown Business Association.
Excuse me. The executive summary states that the emergency reserve amount is equal to 18% of the general fund expenditures. That is 88.3 million in 2025 and 87.4 million for fiscal year 2026. In doing the math for 2025, it comes out to 15.89 million, or rounding up would be 15.9 million. And for the fiscal year of 2026, that would be 15.732, rounding down would be 17.7 million. And that shows a decrease. And I think on page 17 of the executive summary, it says an increase. I think that was maybe just an error there. Under section of the sand, it states that all the sand is free. The costs to transport the sand are anticipated to be approximately 1.2 million, and placing and shaping the sand would be, would cost about $700,000 for a total of roughly $3 million. However, when you do the math, it's 1.9 million, so there's a difference of 1.1 million. So I don't know what the extra cost of that would be. Under the accomplishments, it states that there was the initiation of the Cassero Mantica repairs, slope stabilization project. But I think it's important to know is that the money that was set aside for the Mariposa Bridge, that was used for the, to repair the Cassero Mantica slope stabilization project. And I know with this two-year project, I think it calls for, for the Mariposa Bridge for future projects, for the CIP project, it calls for 12 million. And it originally was for 8 million, but I think that was for X because the bridge unfortunately slid because of the landslide, then there's an extra cost to that. It's my understanding that there is $11.9 million set aside as a placeholder for the pickleball courts, and it's not fully funded. And I'm glad that city staff made that announcement. But I think it's really goes to transparency that we really need to inform the public of that. So I'm glad that was brought up by someone very, out in the community. It's unfortunate that we lost the redevelopment, the past revenue sources in the redevelopment agency, in the Clean Ocean Fund, and in the loss of $5 million of revenue. And so I hope that the pier does get updated with replacing the pylons that are missing, replacing a lot of factors in there. Anyways, I'm all out of time. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Leclerc, the chair of the San Clemente Downtown Business Association. We prepared a PowerPoint for you. We're not going to be able to get through all of it, so I'll go through it quickly. Basically, we're here to remind you who we are. The Downtown Business Association really provides a lot of the things that bring residents to San Clemente. You can go through the next slide. I don't think I have a clicker here. We are a nonprofit organization. All the funds that we raise through sponsorships, vendors, registrations, all goes back into all of the events that we do. And I know some of you have been to some of our events, maybe even run the Shamrock Run. If you go to the next two slides, I'll show you some pictures in case you haven't been there. The previous one, we are responsible for Putting on the Glitz, which we partner with, with the city, which although we don't have the exact data, we know anecdotally that all of the downtown businesses in the T-zone have some of their best days on the days of our events. You can see how busy it is down there, lots of tax revenue happening on those special events. The other one that we just started three years ago, the next slide will show you, our Third Annual Shamrock Run. Huge success, and thank you to allowing us to have it start and end right at the main intersection at Ola Vista and Del Mar. Businesses saw people lingering, hanging out downtown, buying things. We had a lot of residents run, but we also had a lot of visitors come in according to our data. The other events that we do, in case you haven't been there, the next slide should show you. We do networking events, and we have one tomorrow night if you want to come. And we are trying to connect all the business leaders together to brainstorm, help each other's business. That's what we're all about, is having a thriving downtown community with business owners who can work together to come up with new ideas, grow business in our town. And the next slide, I think, we took this on this year. The city members came to us, council members came to us and said, we don't have the bandwidth as a city to do a WSL event when the World Surf League was in town. So we took it on, took on the cost, didn't bring in any money from it just to see, hey, can we throw this together? And we did. This is a video. It's one minute long. I won't make you watch it, but you all should get a copy of this if you'd like to see our very cool marketing that we did for this event. And it was a success, and we're already working with Jonathan and the WSL to do this again in the fall to really celebrate the world being here in San Clemente for the biggest surf competition. So next slide. Oh, no, it played it. Just skip. Some past recognitions, you can read that later. Chris was the Citizen of the Year by the Chamber, though, and he's one of our board members. Next slide, please. So we're coming to you to remind you who we are, remind you that we're taking on a lot of the things that the city wants our residents to have, including downtown events, the upcoming car show, Putting on the Glitz, all of these wonderful things that make us love living here, but we can't do it for free. So we've been very happy to work with you in the past and had a generous funding from you, and we're looking for just a little bit more.
Your time is up, sorry.
Thank you.
What was, I did have a question, though, about that event tomorrow. Who's it for? I saw the...
So we do...
Go back to the...
Sure, it's the mixer we have. It happens, we try to do it every two months, and a local business hosts.
And who's the host?
It's Hemp Valley Farms.
What kind of business?
Hemp Valley Farms, like lotions and medicinal products. And they're partnering with Artifacts, which you may know of, also in the Tulega Business Park. And we'll be there tomorrow night. Members are welcome and non-members, too.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker?
We don't have any more...
That's it? All right, so let's start with...
Mayor, if I might, I just want to make sure that we, there was a question that was asked by Ms. Quintanilla about the fund balance. I want to make sure that you understand how it's calculated, and that is calculated on the general fund operating costs. And in fiscal year 24, 25, there are operating costs of $83,300,18% of that is $14,994,000. So we rounded that actually up, not down, up to 15 million. And the second year of $85,900,18% of that is $15,462. And so we rounded that up to $15.47 million. So just wanted to make sure that council, so that everybody's clear on how we calculate our fund balance. It's near and dear to my heart. It's the most important thing we have, is making sure we have healthy reserves. So just wanted to make sure that we...
I don't think we're confused up here.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You were confused?
Now you are. Now I mess it up.
All right. Anybody have any questions? I know everybody has been fully briefed, spent hours on the document and with staff. So any questions? Okay, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, Andy, I agree completely that the five-year projection where you have numbers spread out, that's not a budget. It's staff's concept of what may need to happen in the future, and that is a little confusing because it looks like it is part of a budget. So I agree completely on modifying that for the public presentation. A question regarding the Rangers. We agreed, we requested four additional sheriff's deputies. We don't have them, but we do have a growing Ranger group, which is very important, park rangers. What's the cost of the park rangers compared to the cost of what the four deputies would have come in roughly? Equivalent or slightly less?
Yeah, that's...
Substantially less, I would hope.
Yeah, substantially less. Roughly, these are rough numbers, but roughly each deputy that we have costs in the neighborhood of $300,000. Our full-time park rangers are less than half that. So yeah, by order of magnitude, they're less than half.
Has the agreement been terminated? Are we going to get those deputies, or do we not need them now?
No, so those deputies are still in the contract, and we actually have some funding in there for additional deputies should that become necessary. We're working with the police, the chief of police services right now to determine whether or not that's necessary. One of the real challenges has been, as of course, their short personnel. One of them has been trying to hire people for those jobs. So we have concentrated more on beefing up our park ranger program to make sure that we are taking care of the same things that were happening with private security and more. They do have citation power. They're able to issue parking citations and do some of the things that the private security could not do.
So is the request for the four deputy, four additional deputies, is that terminated?
No, it's still there.
Still there.
It's unlikely to be.
In due course, in due course, you expect them to come on board.
Perhaps, yes. Again, they have been unable to bring them on board at this point, but perhaps...
And they may not be needed.
Well, yeah.
But they're there.
The request is there, but...
The request is there.
What happens if the sheriff's department, and last time I talked to Sheriff Barnes, I asked him about the four deputies, and he said, well, there's training schedules and other issues, and we just don't have them available. Let's assume they called and said, we've got your deputy available. We have three of them available. We do have... Send the three, or would you say, pause, we don't, we don't need them?
We do have funding in the budget for additional deputies should they become available. We do have funding in the budget for two additional deputies should they become available in the first year.
Well, I think we need to, we need to really consider that because we went to four deputies when we had a real problem with crime at North Beach. We brought allied security onboard to kind of address that issue. That issue, I think, has been pretty effectively addressed.
Yeah.
So the question gets back to them, do we need the four? But I think that's something we'll have to address in the future.
Talk to them about it.
Yeah, I think that's a good future discussion.
I think it'll be a negotiation with them if...
When the time comes. Okay, all right. Future issue, clearly.
Yeah, it's a logistics issue. I remember here that night when you passed the four deputies and everybody was very excited, and I knew, they're not just sitting waiting to come out. They have to hire, and they have to get those people trained, get them to the jail, and then they can release. That's why I was kind of passionate about getting the gap for the securities. I knew they wouldn't be out. And it's still, it's still a challenge. It's a challenge to hire anybody in law enforcement right now. Nobody wants to go into law enforcement, not like they did 10, 15, 20, or 50 years ago when I went in. So it's a difficult challenge. I think what we're doing is good to certainly budget for them, and then when, if and when they become available, we need to take a hard look. I think you're right, Steve.
My next question deals with the PAWS equipment. Is the PAWS equipment defective? Is it broken? Why are we replacing that?
Yeah, it's mostly computer-related, so I'll turn it over to Brian. But I think it's, it sounds like to me the biggest challenge is being obsolete, so he could probably answer that better than I can.
I think obsolescence and age are both the key issues. It's prone to failure, and the company that built it out originally...
Davis just showed up, Matt.
Oh, hi, Dave. I'll let you take this one, Dave. Oh, hi, Dave. I'll let you take this one, Dave.
Are you saying I'm outdated? Is that what you're saying?
Come back from court.
No, but yeah, the equipment is, it's at the end of its useful life. It's in a very harsh environment, and the manufacturer of the original equipment is no longer in business. There's only one other identical piece of equipment in the United States at this point in time, so we really need to replace that system. And so, we're looking at, it's, it seems expensive. We've looked at it. I've had Brian and his team, IT, have been involved to try and understand, is there a way to get the cost down? And unfortunately, it is a very expensive project, but we're primarily replacing a lot of the electrical components within the cabinetry itself, and we're trying to find opportunities to bring that cost down, if possible, as well.
Has the, has the equipment failed to warn, warn the pedestrians at the crosswalk locations? Does it happen frequently?
So, one of the issues we've had, we bought, when I first started in this position about six months ago, we had 15 motherboards. Right now, we're down to five. So, those motherboards.
Functional on the, on the trail, on the?
Functional in a spare.
Oh, spares.
Spare. So, we've gone through 10 spares in the last six months.
Okay. That's good to know. But we haven't had any actual failures of the wiring system?
We've had short-term failures for, you know, 10 hours, 24 hours, while those motherboards shorted out and were not functional. We are looking at ways to maybe send those out and have them repurposed, and so we're looking at that as a possibility as well.
Thank you for that explanation. That helps a lot. My next question is regarding reservoir five replacement. Are we, we're replacing a reservoir?
Yeah, we, reservoir five, since I started here 20 years ago, we've had challenges with that reservoir. We've done multiple internal coatings inside of it.
It's a relining of it? Is that what it is?
Yeah, it's a, it's a above-ground concrete reservoir, and so.
Drain it and redo it? When you say replace it, I'm not sure what exactly.
Yeah, so it's, it was built in the 80s by developers, and it just, it's had an issue because the slope has moved somewhat, and so it's a concrete reservoir. So, it's always been a challenge to keep that reservoir watertight. And so, we've, you know, had multiple challenges with internal coatings, doing grading on the outside, trying to put plugs at the bottom, and it's finally worth the point where, you know, it's better just to replace that reservoir. So, we're looking at replacing the two reservoirs that are up there with just one reservoir at this time. And we want to go with something that doesn't, is leak-proof, like a steel reservoir, something that we can, you know, manage better in the future.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. Just my last comment, it's really not a question so much as a comment, maybe for my colleagues. When we're talking about the 515 trust and the investment of money there.
One.
115 trust, excuse me, 115 trust. One thing I'd just like to keep in mind, and I've mentioned this before, we have, we may be making a decision soon on the desalination facility, and if we get involved in that, that facility, whether we're involved or not, actually, we'll have a sale of bonds, which will, I think, produce revenue possibly in excess of the 6.8. And the $4 million that we would put in the trust, potentially that and/or matching funds or maybe other funds altogether could be invested in that bond for a pretty significant return to our city, which I know, Mr. Mayor, you're now on the Investment Committee, and I know you're, you're going to be looking at that, so.
We're pushing the 115.
Yeah. Well, the additional bond issue, because it generates quite a bit of revenue. Every time I hear that, I think that that's coming, and this year, I think we'll probably have to think about that, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Just a comment.
Is there any other members at which to ask questions? Go ahead.
We're going to have a discussion, too, right? So, I'll hold off on the items of discussion. This is just for questions.
You can have your discussion right now, if you want. I mean.
Well, I'll start with the questions first. And just to clarify, Brian, on the CIP list that you had, I think I know the email you're talking about. We got a very comprehensive email, frankly, by a supporter of the skate park, which I completely agree with, and that, the comments there was about like the $12 million for pickleball courts at Steed, right? And you made the point that that's not something that's actually been budgeted. It's listed on there, but we haven't developed or thought about the funding source yet, right, for that, was it 11-point-something million dollars? Is that, is that one of the things you're talking about?
That's correct. Everything in those outlying years represents an estimated cost by staff. It is, nothing is funded through this budget for those outlying years.
Right. And we've talked about the fact that, that the funding for that would be from probably a private or a public-private partnership, not from the city, right? Just to sort of clarify, we, we don't have the $12 million, right?
That is correct.
Okay. The skate park.
In fact, in fact, nothing's been agreed to.
Nothing's been agreed to. Well, this is, it's part of the plan, which I think has been, has been agreed to, but we haven't taken the next step of actually funding the development.
And it would require that, so.
So, and was the skate park listed as one of the items on the CIP, or where is that?
Skate park is also.
$200,000.
That's on there. Okay. And that one is funded. Okay. Quick, quick question on the DBA, then I'll have a couple of comments. But the, on the DBA, and that was a great presentation, they are a fantastic resource for the city. Where is that in the budget, Brian? I mean, that's not something I don't think we need to talk about today, right? We're going to make that decision about who gets the money later, but is that a line item somewhere?
It is a line item in the budget right now, but not at that amount.
Yeah, it's at $34,000 in the general fund.
Okay.
For the DBA.
And they were requesting, did they request more? 45?
Yeah.
Okay. So, is that, is that a decision we can make today as part of this discussion?
We prefer any input that the council has. The decision, actual decision will be after the public hearing on June 5.
Okay. I think that's, that's a drop in the bucket of the overall, of the overall budget, and I think it's, it's a worthy investment for all the good work that they do. So, I don't know how to make that. Do I need to make a motion for that at some point? Okay.
A motion would be most helpful, so we have clear direction from a majority.
Okay, so a motion, I guess I'll make a motion now, then, that we re-increase it by, is it $10,000 to $11,000 in the budget for the DBA?
So, what is it right now, 34?
34, yeah.
So, you're asking it to go to 45?
45, yes. They've taken on additional responsibilities with the Shamrock Run, that I do, they have benefits for the downtown area in particular.
I'll second it.
Do we, can we have discussion?
Well, I guess we're going to move to that, or do we have to?
Well, we can discuss the motion, the motion's on the floor.
The motion's on the floor, but we also have right now the issue, another motion. Well, we don't have another motion on the floor, so we're just in discussion about that. But is it appropriate at this time to, to hear that?
Sorry, go ahead. You're the parliamentarian.
It's whatever the council would like to do. You can have up to three motions recommended on the table, so take them in any order you want. It's up to you.
Under, under discussion. I agree that the DBA is vitally important. Downtown is huge to this town, is as important as the pier or beaches. It's where people go to eat and have fun. Clearly, it's a jewel of our city. I don't know if there's other organizations that are going to be asking for money. I don't know how much the pool available is that, that would be available to be paired out for this organization and others. It just, it just seems to me we should maybe wait until we know the other organizations, what their needs are and what their requests are, before we just start adding on. I don't know. It just seems a little out of place.
I'm going to talk to that, if you don't mind. There are a number of organizations that we fund by agreement similar to this. They're everywhere in our budget, but they're not visible because they're not a line item. I agree. I think the Downtown Business Association does an extraordinary job, as do many of the organizations. The issue for me is how, and I thought this would be a longer-term project that Andy and I have talked about, is how do you reconcile all the requests that we get, because they come in at different times of the year. Some of them are in budget, some of them are just in agreements that we have with people and organizations to give a certain amount of money. I think if we address this today, we're going to get probably every organization in the city coming in and saying, "We need the same equivalent, 40%, 30%, 20% increase in our budget," and that's probably 20, 30, you know, or different organizations. And I would prefer to deal with them, you know, as you suggest, all at once in a line item with, with our budget, where we can compare apples to oranges and see which one of these organizations merit. I'd also like better accountability from, from all these organizations. A lot of these organizations, we give them money, and we do not really know where the money goes. It's, you know, we know they have events under their banner. The city gets no recognition for them. I, I don't think that's appropriate. I'd like to see the city, if they're going to fund events, get the appropriate recognition for their contribution to these events. But I'd like to, I, I prefer to do this in a, in a, in a budget where we look at all the line items and say, "Okay, here's the 15 or 20 organizations, and this is the amount of money that we have, and let's decide which one gets which amount of money," as opposed to, "You're here today, so you're going to, we're going to give you money." So, and unfortunately, that's the way the city has tended to operate. Someone comes in with, with a group, and all of a sudden, next thing, no, we're giving the money without looking at what they do as compared to another group, the Ocean Festival, the Pure Pride, the Friends of San Clemente, all the, all the different organizations.
Friends of San Clemente give money. We don't take it.
That's right. But, but, you know, I don't have a full understanding. Some people, some of these give back. Some of them market us very well, and I'd like to, I mean, if we're going to choose to do this in a comprehensive manner, I'd rather do it in a comprehensive manner, but.
Yeah, just a couple. I'm a strong supporter of the DBA. I think they do a great job, and I'm inclined to give them more money. I'd kind of like to see brought the Friends of San Clemente. The way it's done is, we get a, we get a statement from the city saying, "Here's what we're going to spend the money on. Can you contribute?" And that's what we do. I, instead of just giving them a blank amount of money, I, I'd really like to just see them turn in something that shows what the, where the money's going, going to specifically. So much for the Shamrock Run. So, it's not a difficult thing to do, and with that, I'd, I'd be inclined to support it, but that's.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
Well, could I ask a quick question?
I want to see it first, though, before we just approve it.
All we're doing is, all we're doing is, is a motion to have this be part of the budget. You could still make an adjustment at the budget meeting if you wanted to take it back out or change it or reduce it. I'm just, this is just so that when we come back to look at the budget, it's at 45, not 34, right? That could still be changed. We're not, we're not setting anything in stone. We're not boxing ourselves in or anything.
We are boxing ourselves in, because once you, you put a number out there, I mean, between now and next week, or next meeting, it's very easy for them to get a set information.
Yeah, would, would that be a problem?
I don't think they'd have any problem. In fact, they, they lose money on all these events, so I think they'd have no problem sharing that with us.
I just think.
They've been at 34 forever, right?
Could I ask a question, Brian or Jake? In terms of these organizations that we help fund, that directly help our city, and we end up getting tax revenues from those events, how does, what's the process for them receiving that money that we have already in place?
Specifically with the DBA, we discussed earlier today, they, these are typically reimbursement requests that come forth that would hit an annual maximum of the amount budgeted, but these, these items typically get reimbursed after they've spent the money in preparation for.
So, we're not just giving them a blanket $34,000, saying, "Do whatever," is they, they come with a reimbursement fund after that. And so, all this would do is say, move that, that budget increase from a max of $34,000 to a max of $45,000 if this motion passed, which they would still have to put in receipts to be funded back on those.
Correct. How would that work, for example, with their mixers? What kind of reimbursement would they be asking for on that kind of thing?
That'd be up to council's direction. Typically, it would go through either economic development or the city manager's office as to what costs are reimbursed and submitted. The DBA would be submitting those costs for reimbursement, and that would be reviewed by economic development or the city manager's office. There could always be, I'll call it, a funding agreement or more specific things brought back to council at some point, too.
I understand. You also used to do the flowers and some of the stuff that the city, and they've abandoned those projects, as I understand. Or are they still doing those?
Yeah, I think there was a time where they were doing some of the landscape maintenance. I don't believe they are doing any landscape maintenance at the current time. We, we are trying, they're, they have a lot of volunteers that are helping them, but I don't think it is an expense to the DBA at this point in time.
Are there any other organizations that we have a reimbursement system with that we, that we?
Typically, you would, it's, there's in-kind services, and that would be the city performing services for outside entities or nonprofits. To the best of my knowledge, there's only like two or three that are direct reimbursements to the actual entity.
Who, who are those?
That would be the, I'll call it off the top of my head, it would be the Marine Unit Support. So, that would be the Marines, and then you have the DBA, and I think there's one other one there, out there, maybe the Chamber, that I can't remember off the top of my head, for, but that one's relatively small.
I would just make a substitute motion that we consider our largess to our nonprofits all at the same time when we do our budget, rather than piecemeal over time.
Yeah, I, I'd like the Chamber to have the same opportunity. They probably didn't know there was an opportunity, not that we couldn't give them all the money that they're asking for.
That's not to disparage the DBA.
No, not at all.
They're a phenomenal organization, and it's the proper way of budgeting.
I think there's no, there's no connection between the two. This is an organization that directly helps local small businesses. The, nobody else does that, so.
I think the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
No, that, they don't hold large events.
The Fiesta.
Well, I mean.
Five thousand, 10,000 people in the street. It's larger, might not be as big as a mixer, but I mean, it's large.
Do I have a second on my motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Call for the question.
Right. Question's been called on the substitute motion.
Councilmember Duncan.
We're not going to vote, Brian.
This is, this is a substitute motion.
We're going to do a roll call vote, because this vote isn't in our system, so.
Okay. No?
No. Councilmember Lefler?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Cabral, Mayor Protimin Meyer?
No.
Yes.
Carrie's 3-2 with Councilmember Duncan and Councilmember Inmeyer voting, or Mayor Protimin Meyer voting no.
Mayor, to clarify, in the budget public hearing, we will bring that item as a separate discussion item, and we'll have more information available.
And will we let them know also our expectations of, the kind of information we'll need, so that we can?
All right. I've got another, another point here to make. It's not necessarily a question, but we had the emergency services officer up there, I remember, as one of your earlier slides, Brian. I'd like to make a proposal, and we talked about this with the city manager. There's an opportunity to have the Orange County Fire Authority provide this service to us, and it would be more than an emergency services officer. It'd be essentially sort of a department, almost department-level public safety director that could oversee lifeguards and firefighters and work with the Chief of Police Services and, and our park rangers. So, I'd ask, I guess as a motion, for the council to give the city manager and myself as the, as the director on the OCFA, the authority to approach the fire authority and inquire whether this is something that they might be able to provide as an additional service for us. I think it would help make our residents safer, and we, I think, for anybody who's been in the public service, public safety area, we do need, I think, someone there to kind of coordinate all those services. We've seen in recent emergencies what happens when you don't have that person. So, I'm asking for a second on that motion.
I don't understand the motion. It's to ask OCFA to appoint someone, or to, are we hiring someone to do this?
Ask OC, we right now have a battalion chief who also services a few other cities. Santa Ana has a different model, if you will. They have one person for their city that does all of their public safety coordination from the fire authority level. That's an extra cost, but I think actually we, we'd get more bang for the buck than we would having the current system in place, plus an emergencies, an additional emergency services officer. If we had, if the OCFA was willing to have Shane, say, if, you know, or someone like Shane be our, our independent chief just for our area, but also take on the lifeguard and other, all the other public safety and emergency services portfolios, that we would pay that additional cost. It would probably still cost us less than hiring another emergency services officer, and we get the right person for the job, right? In most places, the fire department fulfills this service. That's not the way it works for us, because we have the fire authority and they don't have direct oversight, say, over the fire, of the lifeguards. I'd like to see that system put in place. They may not be willing to provide us that service or offer it to us, but I think it would be worthwhile for us to inquire. would be worthwhile for us to inquire.
Do you need a motion to make that inquiry? You're on the board, you could ask staff if that's...
What I understand from the authority is they would like to have the city's support, not just myself as an individual director, that to know that the city is behind that inquiry.
Yeah, I'll second that. And this is just inquiry, this isn't...
There's no committing, no, we don't even know if...
This is just inquiry, right?
We don't know if they'd be willing to even offer that service for us.
My thoughts on that are simply that Santa Ana has its own police department, its own fire department, we contract for both. I'd like to know what our city manager, as the manager of our staffing system here, what he thinks about, about how that could interact with our contract services. Rather than going right to the OCFA and asking that, I'd like to ask our city manager, maybe in the form of a staff report to be agendized for our consideration, because it's kind of a concept that has a lot of moving parts to it. And rather than moving forward, I'd like to have Andy's thoughts, have him mull this, be able to mull this over a bit.
Does that second?
So I seconded Chris's.
Yeah, are you making a motion?
I'll make a substitute motion along those lines. Andy analyze that and get back to us.
And we have conversa, or comments before? Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a great idea, since I think the model that Andy has is this is gonna be somebody who also is involved in reviewing the police contract and the fire department contract. And, you know, myself, I don't know how much, I love Shane, I don't know how much police experience he has, or I just think that while I don't mind looking, looking at this, I'd like to hear from Andy as opposed to what he feels that this position really is. And we could probably, maybe there's somebody out there independently has police and fire experience, but doesn't have any ties to that, to one organization that we're already hiring. So I, I'm in favor of having Andy come back with what he, what he envisions us in, and it doesn't mean that precludes us...
Would you like to hear from him right now?
And, well, no.
Well, no, I think he has to...
But would you get to get...
Of course not. Why would we not, why would we not hear from him?
Yeah, because we don't have the time.
Because he hasn't prepared anything.
We never have the time.
City manager, would you...
Let's talk about this months from now.
Would you like some additional time to prepare what we're asking for?
Yeah, the discussion has been very helpful. What we want to do is make sure we look at all options and bring back the best option to the city council for filling this position, to make sure that we cover all those things, our emergency preparedness, the covering our public safety contracts, and making sure that there's some structure to what's happening in our public safety, to include lifeguards and fire and ambulance and emergency preparedness. And I think we have to look at that and look at all options. So I wouldn't take any options off the table. I'd like to review many different structures as quickly as possible, bring it back to the council, see how you guys feel about the preferred structure and go with that. So, I don't, I don't want to take any options off the table at this point, I haven't studied them enough to tell you that, so...
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the table.
All right, we're gonna vote on the second, although...
Just a quick discussion, I think honestly, both the motions are pretty much the same, it's just what we're doing in this is, I don't know, I think it's just a bit unfortunate how we're taking all these decisions and nitpicking them in such a way to pit ourselves against each other, instead of just going with something that essentially is the same, which is saying, hey, come back with an option, let's see what options are there. So I'll just put that out there, and we can go forward with this plan, but I'm hoping in the future, as recommendations come in...
Well, I think as long as I don't make the motion, we got a good chance of doing that, Mark.
That's sort of the point I'm making, right?
No, okay, what's the substitute motion that's on table?
Speaking to the motion and the comments, I don't think this is nitpicking.
Of course not.
We have, we have a sheriff's captain that could also do the function, and perhaps many other people that could do the function. I think it's the city manager's responsibility to accomplish that. I think it's logical, it's not pitting, it's not about Chris, it's about doing the right thing, so I'll call for the question.
All right, all those...
Well, wait a minute, what's the motion? Is there a substitute motion?
The substitute motion was made by Councilmember Knoblock, seconded by Mayor Cabral, for, to direct the city manager to return with a report for council to lay out different options as far as a public safety officer.
And that would, to include the OCFA...
Exactly, including OCFA. And I'll do a roll call vote, Councilmember Duncan?
No.
Councilmember Loeffler?
Yes.
Mayor Cabral?
Yes.
Mayor Protimin Meyer?
Yes.
And Councilmember Knoblock, carries 4-1, with Councilmember Duncan voting no.
Well, I'm not gonna put forth any more motions, so I'm good.
All right. All right, let's move on. Any other discussion, we're gonna move back to the... Let's, let's go back to the workshop. Any other discussion on the workshop? And if not, we will then finish our workshop, right? We're done with it, Dan.
Mayor, if I might, the only thing we want to end the workshop with is one more reminder that we do have the budget open house on Thursday. It will run from about 4 o'clock to 6:30. Would love to have people there, they will have an opportunity to meet with any of the department heads of all the departments in the city and ask questions, and so we're excited. And for anybody that wasn't here earlier or watching earlier, we want to make sure people are invited to that, we're excited to have an open house.
So does someone want to make a motion to move into, I guess, closed session, right?
Make a motion that we move into closed session.
All in favor? Wait, wait.
We do not have any speaker cards, but I'm sorry, was it Councilmember Knoblock that made the motion?
No.
Okay, thank you. And that carries 5-0.
It's 5-0.
To recess to closed session at 5:08 PM.
Yes, we are at six o'clock. We are ready.
All right, let's call the meeting to order.
Let's, six o'clock meeting is the San Clemente City Council. It's called to order. First item.
First item on the agenda is the invocation. Catherine Bingham, San Clemente Stake Relief Society President with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And then I'll ask you to stay standing while we have a presentation of a flag ceremony presented by the San Clemente High School Army Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Erin Letlin.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we come before thee tonight as residents and leaders of this beautiful city of San Clemente. We are so grateful, Father, for this beautiful place that we call home and for the incredible people that reside here. We ask thee, Father, to bless those leaders of our city tonight who will be deliberating and making decisions. That they will be blessed with a spirit of peace and harmony that can prevail as they discuss and make decisions. Bless them to be able to put aside personal preference in behalf of the needs of the residents of this beautiful place. We are grateful for the bounties of nature and beautiful weather that make this such a lovely place to call home. make this a place of peace and joy for us to reside. We ask a blessing upon all the residents of our city, that they will have peace and harmony in their homes and where they dwell. And we ask a blessing on those who serve in our military, that they'll be protected from harm. We're grateful for their service. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. All right, next, we have a flag ceremony. So remain standing.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you for that. The first item on the agenda is a presentation of commendation to Erin Letwin in recognition of achieving the rank of Eagle Scout and being admitted to the United States Military Academy at West Point. Erin, would you like to come up?
First of all, thank you for the color guards. You have a little information on them, right? You're going to talk a little bit about what the color guards are?
Nope.
Okay.
But we'll start with you. Actually, I'm going to let you have the honor since.
Oh, okay. Well, I am honored. Erin Letwin is a senior at San Clemente High School and as the mayor just indicated, he's achieved the rank of Eagle Scout and has admitted to West Point Military Academy and is responsible for starting their OCT program at San Clemente High School. So we're honored to have you here and we just want to acknowledge the work that you've done for your high school, for your fellow students, and what you'll be doing for our country. So with that, I want to give you this certificate of commendation. Thank you very much. And if the mom and dad could come up and take a picture with.
And also, before the color guard leave, thank you for that wonderful ceremony. Appreciate it.
Take a picture here. Come on in.
Thank you.
All right.
Someone say, "West Point."
West Point.
It's impressive.
All right.
Congratulations.
Beat Navy.
Nice year.
Go Army.
Congratulations.
Thanks again, Erin. Blessings.
We haven't had. Did you want to say a word or two?
Yeah.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank the color guard for coming out. I've gotten to be with them for this year doing JRTC. And it's a program that I'm so glad that the community has put together at the high school. And it's a program I know that will be benefiting the community for many years to come. And it's really cool to see the motivation in the citizenship that it inspires in youth. Thank you.
Next up is presentation of commendation to the San Clemente High School Dance Team in recognition of their achievement at the United Spirit Association Dance Nationals.
All right. It's another organization that's done extraordinary work and made San Clemente proud. We've all read about it in the newspapers. And you've done extraordinary job representing the city across the country. So the city council and I, as mayor, wanted to recognize your achievement to the city and all that you've done. So come on up here and I'll present this to your coach. Congratulations. Yes, absolutely. And thank you for being there. I know it's the end of the year and it's tight.
This is a very special honor.
In recognition of you winning your national championship, the United States Spirit Association Dance Nationals for the second consecutive year. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. This is a real honor.
Thank you.
Captain, yes.
Captain.
We are so happy we got this honor. We all love to dance and we're so grateful that we get to do it for the city and to make our city proud. And it's always nice to hear San Clemente, you said, when we're winning our awards. So we're thankful for this opportunity and we hope to do it again next year.
Take one photo?
Yeah.
It was a lot better picture when I was.
One more, one more.
For the city.
Be on the website.
USA?
USA!
Is there another one?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
We do have National Beach Safety Week.
Thank you. We are? Are those presentations?
Those are presentations.
So we're done with the awards?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
For now.
I don't want to do this trip again.
It is.
After this presentation, you're going to.
Oh, you see there.
I just do what I'm told. Thank you.
Next presentation is San Clemente Chamber of Commerce Food to Fuel Recycling Program. And this is a presentation by Susie Lance, Chief Executive Officer of the San Clemente Chamber of Commerce, and Sarah Peterson with Zebra House Coffee. Come on up.
Susie, do you want the video first or the other?
Can I hear you when we already have video?
Yeah, do you want me to have the other visual up? Sure, you can have the other visual up right now.
Good evening, friends. I'm Susie Lance, the CEO for the San Clemente Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here with my friend and chamber ambassador Sarah Peterson, who's the owner and operator of Zebra House Coffee. And we're here to just speak for a few minutes about California's newest recycling organic requirements. This is SB 1383, and it requires, shockingly, that all cities in California reduce organic waste going into the landfills by 75% in 2025. Additionally, this law requires that a 20% improvement in food recovery take place also by the year 2025. So we thought that this was going to be a really big deal, not only for all cities in California, but for our city of San Clemente. And so we took the bull by the horns like we do over at the chamber, and we decided that we wanted to partner with the city and our friends at CRNR and our business community to launch an environmental education program that will help not only our businesses, but also the public to understand how they can comply with these requirements that are just around the corner. So we kicked off our program last year in 2023. And the mayor joined us actually alongside several business owners and operators of some of our restaurants. And we took a fabulous tour out to Paris, California to see RNR's digester. And there, we saw the visual of how our organics are converted into clean transportation fuel. It's really a phenomenal process. Then, coming off of that, one of our guests, who is Sarah, she came representing her restaurant. She decided alongside this group that we needed to form a green team. And this was a task force to kind of help our businesses to understand really what was around the corner. And so we had our green team meetings last year in 2023 and this year into 2024. And what we decided to do was really fun. We decided to make some educational videos, one being kind of a generic promotional video for the entire community to see, but also an instructional video that would allow folks who work in our kitchens and in our restaurants to really understand how they can operate. And so we're going to go ahead and show you the video. Unfortunately, we can't hear the audio on it, but Sarah's going to kind of dictate what's happening in this video.
I'm going to just do that before.
Before, okay.
Wait, pause. Okay. So then you don't have to hear me talk during the video. But so this video is the promo video. This one is meant to be shorter, more fun, and really inspire the people. Because in order for us all to make this work, we all, as humans, have to get behind how cool it is that we can take our food scraps and our lawn scraps and turn them into fuel for vehicles. It's just really, it's really amazing. And it's so easy. So that's what this video is about. You're going to see the life cycle of the food coming into the restaurant, the scraps going into the green bin, and then going out and being made into fuel. So, let's do it. And you'll see us popping in saying "food to fuel" if you're wondering why we're popping out of bushes. We wanted to make it fun.
Do you want to tell them what's happening?
So this is in Guardia. They're a family-run business. They do a lot of green initiatives, food coming in, food to fuel. So we can recycle everything from avocado pits to tomato peels and our coffee grounds. So we do a lot of that at Zebra House. We put everything in our green bin in these little bags. That was me in the bush. Yep, yep. And then we send it off with CRNR. And they've really, then they bring it out here to this facility. They sort it, pull out the things that aren't supposed to be in there, and run it through these big tanks. And then you get fuel as part of the byproduct, along with other, you know, yard fertilizer and some other things that you'll find at Lowe's. So these are all the people that helped us put this together. And that is not us.
Yeah. Thankfully. So to kind of put this all together, in the coming weeks, we're going to be delivering 200 of these buckets, don't ask me exactly how we're going to do that, to our businesses. They are a starter kit. So inside, they include these green bags. They also include a food to fuel sticker and instructions, and also what goes where. So these can be posted in the kitchens. And for those who are complying and doing a great job, we have created a window cling that's a food to fuel sustainable leader that the businesses can present in their front windows, kind of like what you see with the SC times and the winners. It's a sustainable leader food to fuel emblem. So that's it. I think that's what we got for you. We're really excited to help bring solutions to the businesses. And if there's anything else that we can do to support in this program, Sarah and I are committed. Craig from CRNR is also here tonight. He's been extremely helpful with his team. And of course, we couldn't do it without the partnership with the city. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Great presentation.
I'd like to make a quick comment, but also, should we do a motion to go beyond the 15 minutes? That's in the policy for special presentations. Okay, I'll move that we go beyond the 15 minute that we set for policies for special presentations.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, just a quick comment. Thank you so much, Susie and Sarah. By the way, Sarah, not only good for the community, but also the best muffins in town, in my humble opinion. Also, to the city staff, Dana McIntosh, who runs this program from the city side. She's a great partner. I see Craig over there nodding. And this is actually going to really help the city by encouraging our businesses to get us to that mark that we need to get to, to comply with state law. So thank you both for that. And I should note, too, that gas, I think it's propane, that is created by the digester, it not only fuels the trucks with the clean energy, but it actually also, I think, gets sold back to SoCal Gas. So they actually make money in addition to performing that service. That's all good for our environment. So great system and wonderful presentation. Thank you both for all your work on that.
Am I allowed to say one more quick?
No. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead and say.
What you saw, the original visual, was on our website, on the San Clemente Chambers website, we have a tab called Initiatives. And under that, you'll see the Environmental Education tab. Both videos are included there, not only the promotional video, but the educational video. So you can click in there and see everything that we've done through this program over the last couple of years. So thank you so much.
And thank the chamber for taking initiative to organize this. I did go on that trip, by the way. And so if you ever get invitation to Paris, make sure you know it's.
Wait, it's in Paris?
It's in Paris, yes.
Paris, USA.
Paris, USA. Go on the trip. It's well worth it. You get a better understanding of how this process is working, how the stores are implementing it. And there's a real need for it, obviously. And in San Clemente, we always try and do our part to protect the environment. So thank you.
And the CRNR recycle center, you know, you think of a trash company, but it looks like a NASA command center when you get in there. It's a super high-tech and very, 100% of the green waste. None of it goes, none of it gets wasted. It's all used. So it's commendable. Thank you.
I also want to acknowledge the restaurant owners who came out and spent an entire day with us. They're listed on our site. They sent someone to really understand what this process is. That's a huge commitment for our restaurant folks. So we want to encourage you all to patronize those who are sustainable leaders in San Clemente. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next presentation.
Next item on the agenda is presentation of proclamation declaring May 20 through 27, 2024 is National Beach Safety Week. And we have Marine Safety Chief Malat and Marine Safety Lieutenant Stoudenbauer here to accept the commendation.
All right. Did you want to say a few words first, or?
Sure, I can say a few words.
Five, 10?
Thank you, Mayor Cabral, and council members. I want to thank Mayor Cabral and the council members, City Management, Les Lea. First of all, before we get into the National Beach Safety Week, for getting the sand on the beach. It looks amazing. I hope everyone's got a chance to go down and see it. But thank you for always pushing hard for the sand. It's going to be a great summer. So with National Beach Safety Week, it kicks off, this started Monday. It'll go through Memorial Day. It brings awareness to the dangers of the ocean. Our best resource here in San Clemente is our beaches, right? And every year, we have about 2.5 million visitors a year. And the biggest component for us of lifeguard operations is public education, right? So this starts that off with summer starting this weekend. We're four days away from summer beginning on Memorial Weekend. So we got new sand and some new guards. And we're excited. And our job is to spread the message, how to be safe at the beach. Last year, our lifeguards, men and women, rescued over 1,200 swimmers in distress. No drownings, happy to report that. I want to thank those who are not here. This is our Lieutenant Sean Stoudenbar, our Marine Safety Officers, Ian Burton, Nick Juney, Blake Anderson, and Dominic Rodardi, and all the other men and women that are in the towers that are serving as supervisors. So I'll pass this on. So, I'll pass this on, and I want to thank council members again for the continued support, and City Management as well, and I'll pass it on for Lieutenant Stoudenbauer to give you guys some safety tips in the public.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll be really quick. Coming down to this beach this summer, we look excited for some warm weather and, and sand, obviously. Just if you're bringing your family or friends or out-of-town guests down, we always recommend that you learn to swim, check in with a lifeguard before going out in the water, always swim near an open lifeguard tower, never swim alone, join a junior lifeguard program, never dive in headfirst, and always protect yourself from the sun. And if, if in doubt, don't go out and, and talk to a lifeguard. So, look forward to seeing everyone down on the beach this summer. Thank you.
Hopefully, the, the population's listening and gets that message and understands importance of safety here on the beaches.
And, I can't believe Shane isn't up here with you. That guy's always, anything to do with safety, he's usually there. Get the award.
Rick, Rick.
There's all these whereas. Okay.
I'm going to try to blow through this fast here. Whereas the beautiful coastal beaches of San Clemente represent world-renowned recreational resource, and whereas residents and visitors alike are drawn to these beaches by the millions each year for water and beach activities, and whereas, everybody can join in if you want any time, the aquatic environment has dangers that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilant of professional lifeguards, and whereas, for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment are appropriate at the commencement of the busy summer beach season, and whereas, residents and visitors alike must remember to learn to swim, swim near a lifeguard, swim with a buddy, check with the lifeguards, use sunscreen, and drink water, obey posted signs and flags, keep the beach and water clean, learn rip current safety, enter the water feet-first, and wear a life jacket. Now, therefore, I.
Victor Cabral.
Mayor of the City of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby proclaim May 20th through May 27th, 2024 as National Beach Safety Week.
Count.
You're not looking for accommodation, are you?
Not today.
Not today.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Adam Atamian, Community Development Director. With me tonight is Carly Hunter and Troy Shanker, our two fantastic community outreach workers. And tonight, we're here to talk about the county's 2024 Point-in-Time Count.
I'm going to interrupt him for just a minute. He said fantastic workers. We had a chance this week to talk to the people that are in charge of housing for the county, and they said that Carly and Troy were the best outreach workers in the entire county, and he wasn't kidding about it, and I think they are, so. Go on, make sure they know.
Did they use the word rock star? Because they kind of, they prefer that term.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. So, the Point-in-Time Count is a required function of the county's, County Health, to identify the population of homeless individuals within the county, and this is required by HUD on, on a regular basis. The county does it every two years. The methodology for this count involves a team of volunteers that go out with pre-assigned maps and some, some technology that helps them take in information and identify where points of contact were made. This year, the count in San Clemente was accomplished for unsheltered individuals, which will be the focus of this talk tonight on January 25th. The sheltered count is done on a separate day, and so then, the, what I will be discussing is the unsheltered counts. Next slide. To give a little bit of context, in 2019, the Point-in-Time Count identified 96 unsheltered individuals for the City of San Clemente. At that time, the city was of the understanding that this number was high, based on the information that we had available at that time. Mercy House was providing our contracted community outreach services at that time. Their numbers were, were low because there, they had limitations on the amount of work that they could do within the city. However, the city still believed that that number was, was high. Next slide. In 2022, the number was 81 unsheltered individuals within the city. These numbers reflected a 16% drop from 2019, while the county as a whole identified a drop of 18%. However, during this month, the entire month of January, when this 81 count was identified, the city's outreach worker, who was Carly, Carly Hunter at that time, she was only able to make contact with 52 people for that entire month of January. So, because of that, she and I had a presentation very much like this back in 2022 to discuss these numbers and our concerns about how they did not appear to reflect accuracy of the actual homeless population within the city. Next slide, please. So, that brings us to 2024, and unfortunately, we're, we find ourselves in a similar situation. This year, 65 unsheltered individuals were identified in one day in January of this year. This does represent a 20% drop from 2022, and this is, while the county as a whole experienced a 27% increase. So, the numbers do show an overall drop of 33% from 2019, with the county during that same period of time increasing by 3%. However, slide, next slide, please. The, the numbers, while the numbers do reflect a drop, the, the city staff is still concerned that these numbers do not reflect an accurate count. In the month of January of this year, the unduplicated individuals contacted were 45. During that same month, we had seven street exits, and so, the, it's very hard for us to fathom how, in an entire month, our community outreach staff is able to find 45 in January, even 43 in February, and, and try to substantiate a, an unsheltered count of 65. Keeping in mind that this 45 does include some housed individuals, and it also includes the number of people that were here at the beginning of the month, that weren't here at the end of the month, and vice versa. And so, a, a single day where somebody's able to find, or a group of people are able to find 65 is, is concerning. The feedback that we had received from those involved in the count, which Carly and Deputy Garcia were, indicated that, along with some of the, the homeless advocates of the city that volunteered, we were indicating numbers closer to 29, which that actually is the experience of our community outreach team. We remain concerned about these numbers, and the city has requested data from the county to evaluate its efficacy. While we understand that the numbers do reflect an overall drop, they, they, we are concerned that the, the, what I'll call the survey is potentially not accurate in terms of specific counts, and we need, we need accurate information. If, if this is, if these are numbers that are purported to represent individuals, we want those numbers to be accurate. We don't find that to be the case now, so city staff will evaluate the data. It's, it's the rough data that's provided from the counts themselves. They, they do not have personally identifying information, but the county, in their methodology, does identify unique identifiers for individuals. One other aspect of, of, of concern on these counts is that there are, there are both surveys done of individuals contacted, and then there are observations made with people who are not actually contacted. They're, they're, they're seen by the volunteers, and they're, they're logged as an observed person who's homeless. We do have concerns about that. Those numbers typically are 55% of the count is people who are actually contacted and interviewed, and 45% of the count are people who are just simply observed and determined by the volunteer to be homeless. So, there's a lot of questions that we have, and we will report back as, as appropriate when we have more information on those numbers. Carly and Troy are here, and we're all happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any, we, we probably do have some questions, but I guess we'll take the public comments first, if there's any.
Yes, we have one public comment. Tom Strager.
All my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're up, Amanda.
Nope. Anybody else?
No. Oh, not, not, not.
All right. Let's get into discussion, if there's any discussion, any.
I don't have questions. I got, I got some comments.
Questions? Well, questions or comments?
Don't have any questions. I've, so, we open for comments?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm extremely disappointed. I, I've been involved with the outreach program since it was initiated, met Carly pretty much the first day she was here, went out and observed what she did from the, from the get-go, and I followed up what their, what their effectiveness has been all along. And this Point-in-Time Count, we've, we've seen it over the years, but it, it's lost all credibility. We might as well just ignore it. The count in the 60s is insulting and baseless. It's insulting to our outreach workers, it's insulting to Deputy Garcia, it's insulting to OCSD as a whole, it's insulting to our park rangers, our code enforcement, and frankly, our allied security that we had here, who are all components of contacting, finding services, and reducing our homelessness here. The method, mythology, methodology, methodology of this count is staggeringly stupid. You send people out, not even with another person to verify them. A lot of these people go out by themselves with a cell phone and an app, and untrained, and who knows what their agenda is, and they see somebody and they hit the button, they hit the button. Well, no, they're not homeless, they hit the button. There's no, at the end of the day, get together and try to have somebody who's a supervisor say, well, look at the data, well, this was good, this is bad. It, it hasn't happened. Our, this last Point-in-Time Count, our count was under 20 in the morning, and then somehow they went out in the afternoon and found another 45 homeless people. We've driven around the city, we know. I believe it when Carly and Troy, and including some of our advocates in the city, say, yeah, we're probably around the 30, 30. So, so you listen to the county, I listen to the county guy talk and make excuses and excuses. What his excuse was, yeah, well, we don't know if it's accurate, but hey, you went down by 20%. So, that's great, thank you. It looks to me like they take the numbers and they've just lowered everybody by 20% to make you happy. The, the number, there's no accuracy to the numbers whatsoever. I, I look at a city like Irvine. Irvine, 300,000 people, we have 63,000 people. They have 66 square miles, including kind of desolate, you know, open areas and commercial areas. We have 19 square miles, yet we have more homeless count than they do. How could this possibly be? It's, it's just an insult to us. I, I just don't understand this. I want to reach out, and I apologize, Carly and Troy, because I know the work you do, and, and this is just an embarrassment. I'm apologizing to you because I know what the count really is, and I know how hard everybody has worked to get this down. And throw these numbers out, we know that the number is 30 or something, and thank you so much. Go down to North Beach, anybody here that saw it a year ago, and take a look at it now, and then tell me we have more homeless in the city. So, again, I apologize, and thank you very much for your service.
Yeah. I, I would just join in your comments. I think the numbers are artificially inflated. I, I think I've, I had the opportunity to talk to Troy and Carly about the, what they consider the real numbers, and, and I want to make one point. Those real numbers, we call these, these 60 or even the 30 homeless. The question for me oftentimes is, if someone is offered housing, which many of these people are, and I, maybe we can ask the question about how many have been offered, tried to be placed in housing, but because of mental health issues, or drug addictions, or because they can't bring their, their dogs, are resistant to, to housing, are they technically still homeless? And I have that question for you later on. But I did go to the presentation by Doug Beck at, at the county to, to hear his numbers, and I, and I, he made those same arguments earlier, well, you should be happy, your numbers are going down. And when you question them about where they got their numbers, some of them are just observed, people, untrained individuals saying, that person looks homeless, and so, they're counted as a homeless person. I've had two people from other cities say, well, we asked our people, and they said, well, they had a backpack on, and so they looked homeless, so they were identified as a homeless person in our city, and, and, but on occasion, they would ask them, and they say, no, we're going down the road. We're, we live here, we just have a backpack on. So, so I, I, I think there's a number of observed people that are on there, but I, I think it's more than an embarrassment, and, and this is why, because there's legislation being considered right now in the state, being considered maybe even this week, that's going to use these numbers to impose obligations on the city to address those homeless individuals, and require us to take certain actions as a city as a result of that count. So, that count is important, and, and it is important because that, that count may be, may burden us with some responsibilities to address those issues, and so they're not just numbers that we can ignore, it's numbers that we should take seriously and find out where they are, how they came about. I've asked for the same data at that meeting, and it was promised to me a week ago. I still haven't received it, and I know our city manager has asked for that same data, and hopefully, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to receive it soon and, and get those real numbers. So, I don't want to take too much more time on this, but I think it's a serious issue that we have to address. I thank everyone in, in that department for the work they do. I know that they have the best count because they go out every single day, they meet people, they find people, they interview them, they probably know them all by name, so, you know, to compare those real numbers of 29, if that's the real number, that, that's probably closest to the real number, and not 64. And so, that's, that's the number that we, as cities, have to start using for developing our programs, to the extent that we, we have some, and we've done a pretty good job in, in addressing that, that homeless, those homeless issues. So, that's the number we have to use as a base, and not some artificially inflated number imposed on us by the city or the, or the, not the city, but the, the county, or the, or the government. So, that, that's where I would go from here, but those are my initial observations on this. Is there more come? Yes?
I want to echo the, the comments of both of you before. I make a couple of observations, too. I was also at the county presentation. Right off the bat, not to disparage the county even more and pile on, but they admitted that they made a massive mistake in counting Laguna Beach versus Laguna, Laguna Woods, that they allotted a lot of homeless people from Laguna Beach to Laguna Woods. It made Laguna Woods that tiny senior, sorry, Tom, senior population, you know, area, you know, that's a major mistake, right? That right off the bat, they had admitted they had made. So, I think the other observation that I'd make is, you know, we, we were under a lot of pressure to put an emergency shelter in here and take all kinds of other measures that cities have done, by the way, in Central and North Orange County, and their numbers have gone up. We did it our way. We trusted Troy and Carly and Adam to put together a program that fit San Clemente. They said, trust us. We said, we believe in you, and they made it work. And I think that's a great, that's the real story here, regardless of whatever these numbers are. The real story is that we developed our own program that fit our City of San Clemente. We, we hired tremendous professionals to carry it out. We, we empowered them, we gave them the authority to, to act in the best interest, and they, they implemented a program that worked, right? And so, let's keep that going. So, I just wanted to- So, I just wanted to highlight that as we look at this broadly. We can't control necessarily what the county can do, but we can control how we approach this issue, and I think we've been a massive success, and that's a testament to all of you sitting right there. So, thank you so much again.
All right. I have...
I just have a question. Mr. City Manager, have we formally notified the county that we object to these numbers and why?
Yes. Yes, and they have promised us additional data that we can review, and we have not received it yet.
Well, I think this is consistent with what we see out of Sacramento, the homeless industrial complex, that billions and billions are being made funded out of Sacramento for this issue. And false counts like this and false narratives that we continually get from Sacramento and their representatives sort of fuel this false narrative. So, I appreciate you being diligent and staff monitoring this and acknowledging the impropriety of these numbers. So, I just want to agree with the other comments that have been made.
Mark?
I will echo a lot of what was said. It is unfortunate to see this data being presented in such a way that these are supposed to be hard numbers that obviously don't match the data that we know from the foot, our feet on the ground, and the work that Carly and Troy, that you're doing so phenomenally. I think we do need to celebrate the fact that we know that our numbers have been reduced significantly, if not in half, maybe more, but incredible job that you are doing. And I would love to hear more ideas of what you have to address our homeless situation. Let's get it down even further. What can we do to do that? What can we do to support you in doing that? I will say that, as mentioned, that a lot of the homeless are housing-resistant. I would say that that's not the case. There are a small portion, perhaps, but most of them do want to receive services and want to receive housing, and it's a matter of availability within the county. But let's keep pursuing those hard facts and those hard statistics. Let's find out where this number went wrong, why it went wrong. But let's not then use this as an excuse to not address the issue of our unhoused population. We still need to address it. We still need to do what we need to do to be good citizens for those who are unfortunate. So, let's use the correct data that's there, still be compassionate, still help those who need help, and give us ideas of what we can do to support you.
Thank you. The only thing I would add to all the comments, I think the figure that was thrown out by the county for, Orange County for Homeless Support Service and Addressing Homeless Issues, and I think, as I best understand, it's a comprehensive number of healthcare, medical care, housing, all of it, was the number of $2 billion that we're going to spend, which is, in my view, an extraordinary amount of money for the very few numbers, even with these numbers that are listed, if they are artificially inflated. It's a lot of money, and so there is the money and the resources that's being devoted by counties. And I was asked, you know, how can we help guide you? And I said, "Well, we'll find a place in the county where, and we'll look, we'll start looking for places if you can't figure it out." And we will continue to look for places to service these people in the county. But I want to address the issue of housing resistance because that's an issue you just mentioned, and I've had the opportunity to talk with staff about that. So, maybe we can get some, ask you a couple of questions. I don't know which staff. Adam, you want to? So, you can both, whoever.
Hi, I'm Mary Cabral, council, city manager.
So, we've heard this number, I think from you. I've heard different numbers, but you go out every day and talk to people, identify them. What's your best number for the number of individuals out in the community that are living by choice or because of circumstances out in the community in San Clemente?
So, currently and this year so far, we've hovered around about 22 people that are service-resistant, that have been offered a multitude of services, that are not at this time willing to accept any of them.
And we did talk about a couple of people. We've had this chance, that people that live in the beach area, that you've gone and talked to many times, and they, I mean, maybe you could talk about, not those people, but, you know, you've tried to address their needs at various times, and they make a conscientious choice. It's a lifestyle right now, and they haven't hit the rock bottom that they need to, so that they'll tell you, "Yes, help me, put me in a place." Is that how you would describe it, too?
It's a lot of consistency, building rapport. You know, Carly and I always have people that are not, we can only help them as much as they allow us to, but we continue to ask. We ask people seven days a week, multiple times a day, because it only takes the one time that they say that they're open to it. So, we're professional optimists.
Yes, yeah, and we're hopeful, too, that your work will pay off. I mean, I think all of us agree here on this. I think I can speak for all of us, agree that we'd like to see those people in a place somewhere, but you are doing that every day. Your assurance that you're doing it. So, how many other, outside of the 22, are, do you see that for other reasons, maybe mental health reasons that are service-resistant also, or?
No, I would say that's more than likely, including mental health.
Okay.
But it takes us, some people, when they get out there and they're stuck out there for a long enough time, it's very hard for them to trust a people or a system. And so, yeah, something like maybe an illness will get them to kind of scare to shelter a little bit.
Okay.
So, if these people are choosing to stay out on the street, there's usually something that's keeping them out there, whether it's a pet, could be a pet, but we will work a way around any kind of pet, cats, dogs, ducks, whatever it takes. If it's a mental illness, we can help, you know, get someone right into, once you get into mental health, who can help us refer someone into a shelter. It's just when that person is ready, and we're consistently, every day, asking.
So, the 22 people that you've identified, is that the bulk of the San Clemente residents? I mean, there isn't people that say, "Find me housing," that you haven't been able to find housing for this week?
There are people that are particular in the assistance that they will be open to, but a lot of like reality testing and just having honest conversations about wanting to get them in somewhere usually will kind of break down that wall, and that's why really just, you know, the rapport and longevity of just the relationship that Carly and I will build with that individual over time, they'll trust us enough to understand that, you know, we only have their best interests in mind, and we'd rather get them into some sort of living situation as opposed to maybe something that might be more unrealistic.
All right. Thank you very much for all you do for San Clemente. Rick, did you?
Yeah, I think this punctuates their effectiveness, and I agree with Mark. You know, when they first came in, when Carly first was hired, I think the number was big, especially not maybe people that were staying here all the time, but definitely passing through. And I think the reason why they're finding services for anybody that will accept them, and that's why this number has dropped and dropped and dropped, and what you end up with is people that are more resistant, you know, and that's why we have the 20-some-odd that are very service-resistant, but they're still working hard to bring that number down no matter what.
And I appreciate that you mentioned the reasons for that resistance, and that having a pet, for instance, or some mental health issues with that. And I just want to commend you for building those relationships to break down those walls so that they can eventually receive those services that can help them and help our larger community by helping them. So, thank you for your continual work in doing that.
So, let me just address that. So, I better understand, so the person that has a pet, for example, you would work on that person for a while?
We'd get the pet, sorry to interrupt, Mayor, we'd get the pet certified as an emotional support animal same day.
Okay. And then they can move in someplace. All right, so you explain that to them and help them. They still may not want to obtain this.
They'll take it for a day or two and then take their dog out to go to the bathroom and think that, "Oh, man, I'm out here too early. I think they're going to probably kick me out. I think I'm going to leave."
Yeah.
And then that's another time that this person is back out on the street, and then Troy and I circle around him again and then try to find another place. And that was this last time when we actually had to get their animal certified and get him into a shelter, so.
All right. I appreciate it again.
It's a bunch of rounds and rounds, but...
Thank you for all your hard work. Any other questions, though? All right. Thank you, all of you, for your hard work.
Okay, next item on the agenda is council member reports.
All right, any reports?
I just have one quick report. I was pleased to attend the Pier Pride's, Dana Point, San Clemente Pier Ride last week, well-attended, and raised a lot of money for Pier Pride, and was glad to be there.
I have two things to report on. Last week, I had the opportunity to present to the Cal Cities, Coastal Cities Leadership Group about our sand replenishment project that we're doing and how we are protecting our rail line through sand replenishment and sand retention. It's very well-received. And also, some great news. I've been in contact with Congressman Mike Levin, and he is earmarking $10 million for the rebuilding of our Mariposa Bridge. So, very excited about that. Don't want to count our chickens before it's hatched, but that is coming down the line. So, hopefully, we'll see that soon, and very excited.
Yeah, I've got one thing. I was going to do this before I realized it's Beach Safety Awareness Month, so I'm glad Rod's still here. I just want to make everybody aware that punctuates how good our lifeguard service is. On May 10th at 18:25 hours, which is...
That's 6:25 in the evening.
Okay. Call came into lifeguards, a diner at Fisherman's saw what they thought was somebody struggling in the water and going underwater, so they called the lifeguards. It happened right under Tower Zero. So, Marine Safety Officers responded. Marine Safety Officer Dominic Rodardi, Lifeguard Supervisor Maverick Moore, and by the way, Maverick Moore just ran from Lifeguard Headquarters, went right to the pier, and just dove into the water. I mean, started a search right there before anybody had gathered up. Also, former lifeguard of the year, now you know why. And then also, Lifeguard Supervisor Andrew Mansour, Lifeguards John Chetwood, Jaden Blanc-Hall, Jack Noyes, Cruise Tester Conrad Rojas quickly responded to the location and started again searching in the water. Short time later, State Parks Lifeguard showed up to assist in the search, OCFA Engine Company 60, OCSD Patrol Units, OC Harbor Patrol Boat, OCSD Duke Air Unit, and San Clemente Park Ranger Trevor Maloche, who was a former, he's our head park ranger, he was a former lifeguard. He responded down there and started handing out equipment, any of the support stuff that they needed, responded as well. Performed an extensive search until dark, found nothing, and then later, kind of a post-op, the OCSD checked parking lots for cars that were abandoned, any possible things on the beach that would indicate somebody in the water, checking for missing persons, none. So, it was a situation that turned out to be a false narrative, but it could have been real, and if it was, we had so many personnel right there responding to this, and it just, I say, it just says so much about Chief Merlot's group down there as lifeguards, and this, like I say, just happening on Beach Safety Month just kind of happens to be nice.
I like it. Yeah, thanks for that report. Chris?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to go with OCFA Air Operations yesterday. They were increasing the air operations capabilities of the Fire Authority, so was able to take a viewpoint from a helicopter with them. We're getting two new Firehawk helicopters there, so they're going to be, they're already a world-class fire agency, they're going to be even more world-class. And so, got to have the aerial views of the coast fire in Laguna Niguel, up to the Emerald Fire in Laguna Beach, and then circle around our area as well. And it was just really incredible to see our city from that vantage point, and it's comforting to me to know that we're investing in those kind of priorities to keep us safe as we enter fire season here. We have another season of a lot of fuel out there, so that was really good to see. Also, a lot of people got notices, but tomorrow night, there's a listening session at 5:00 PM, I think, on coastal bluff erosion. So, if you'd like to participate in that and you haven't gotten the notice, email my city email, and I'll give you the link to tune into that. But that's more of that Coastal Rail Resiliency Working Group. They've done some sand ones. This one specifically on bluffs. So, good to tune in to anybody that's interested. Thank you.
All right. Two things, actually three. We had, Rick and I attended the business opening of Gbroni's Pizza, acknowledged the new businesses, or in this case, a move business here in San Clemente. Attended also the Hall of Fame for, Sports Hall of Fame. Again, Rick was, you forgot to mention that. It's an important event for our community.
Thank you for mentioning it.
And finally, the point-in-time count. We had a meeting, I had a meeting with the county where we went over the point-in-time count and raised the same issues that were raised earlier today about my concern for those numbers and trying to get clarification of how those numbers came about and waiting for a report on those. There was a meeting also earlier this week with them reiterating our concern with those numbers, and so we hope to find out soon what those numbers really are. That's it for me. All right. Next item.
Oral Communications, and we have two speakers. Jennifer Massey, followed by Amanda Q.
I know you've missed me. I haven't been up here for a while, but Jennifer Massey, also known in town as Jiffy, and I want to commend you all. We are very grateful for your service. Thank you so much. I'm back here about these e-bikes. I'm asking you to please save lives by regulating the e-bikes to the same regulations required for motorcycles. If one of us licensed drivers hit an e-biker, what are our liabilities? We licensed drivers have to have protection from e-bikers who can cause accidents because they don't know the rules of the road. Tonight, driving up Pico, I saw a regular biker, there was a regular bike, not an e-bike. He was riding on the sidewalk, right by the high school. And there is a bike lane going by the high school, so he just chose to ride on the sidewalk and not in a bike lane. So, the message to all bikers has to be, so our city message to bikers has to be stronger. Finally, we have to keep signs up at the pier notifying e-bikers they can't ride the beach trail. I admonished this little young boy the other day. I said, "Well, excuse me, sir." I said, "You can't ride that e-bike on the beach trail." He said, "Oh, don't worry." He said, "I'll be back," and he rode off. Okay, but the signs are all gone. So, he, anybody with an e-bike coming down to ride on the beach trail would not have been aware that they weren't allowed to ride on the beach trail. So, in my old lady opinion, they should have the same regulations as motorcycles, which I know would make a lot of your voters very unhappy, because a lot of them are parents of 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15-year-olds who couldn't get a driver's license and who love it because they don't have to ferry their kids to Tressels or to schools or whatever else it is. So, I understand, for you gentlemen, you'd be attacked by a lot of angry moms. I don't know what to say, but I just implore you, because I'm old and I, these kids went right in front of me the other day as I was driving very slowly up to a stop sign. All three were in dark clothes, no light on the bike, no license plate, no anything, and they just crossed right in front of me, just barely hitting my fender through a stop sign. So, some old lady like me is going to hit one of them someday, and I just hope you can deal with that old lady.
Thank you very much for your comments. We... Thank you very much for your comments. The state, county, and city are all looking at new regulations, so we're on top of it.
Also, that's a good reminder to Mr. City Manager, with Memorial Day coming up, could we probably make sure that we do have some signs up and maybe let the park rangers know? Maybe they could do some education down there to start early and let them know about the beach trail?
Something could be done. All right, next speaker.
Amanda Q., followed by Mike K. Amanda?
I have a presentation. Megan? Oh, sorry. Next slide, please. At the OCTA meeting of May 13th, Director Katrina Foley stated, "I want to thank Mr. Johnson, Mr. Foo, everyone who is working on this for extra attention as it relates to sand and nourishment component, and the community meetings, and working with various different stakeholder agencies. Very much appreciate the work that is being done here. I understand that there is a concern about the status of the project, and I don't think that we should be worrying about that because we have support. We can provide additional amendments at a later date. And then, as it relates to the design itself, the engineering, the whether or not coastal marine engineers have been involved, this is just a concept right now. We would then hire design experts to design this construction plan, and they will have to work all these factors in mind." The Coastal Commission, which will be weighing on the marine engineering, so I'm not too worried about that right now. I think that's where we are not there. We're not there right now. Next slide, please. She further stated that the county actually has a project that we have submitted for funding for a living shoreline. And I know that the county, we are also working on the collaborative effort to try to bring all the entities that are impacted together so that we can start talking about the sand needs together as opposed to everyone in their own silos and maybe use our resources more efficiently. So those to respond to some of the comments. Next slide, please. So to address mitigation, our city has a project for Montavo Canyon, and the Coastal Commission required habitat restoration mitigation, just like the Coastal Commission is requiring that of the OCTA. Next slide, please. At the May 13th OCTA meeting, Mr. Hall did not speak about minimizing the rock and increasing sand and replenishment. Supervisor Foley did not propose a resolution. It was a motion about an agenda item regarding the OCTA staff about proceeding to including sand implementation. Next slide, please. The OCTA wants to piggyback on the city's plan for... with sand replenishment with the Army Corps of Engineers and as part of their Coastal Rail Resilience Study. However, last week, the Coastal Advisory Committee, a member seemed to misinform the public. He stated, "The reason why OCTA is incorporating sand and placing the sand is almost a pre-mitigation effort on their part so that they don't have to." Because I know when they started this process, you know, they applied for the emergency permit. They tried to pay just a couple hundred, a few hundred, and it was only through citizen action that we got that amount up to 13 million. And so they now know it's expensive to dump rocks on our beach. And I wanted to thank the city manager for clarifying misinformation, because here is a Coastal Advisory Committee member misinforming the public. I guess it was a waiver, and it's a concern of that. Next slide, please. So just be careful with petitions with false information. Next slide, and next slide. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Mike K.
Mr. K., you're up.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I want to share with you something that we're going to be talking more about, and remember Duncan mentioned earlier today, and that's fire. I've brought it up many times before. Fire is a major concern for me. I live over in an area that's in the very high fire zone, and as a result, our insurance rates are problematic, et cetera. I've brought this up, and it's been addressed many times here, and I appreciate that. I had the chance to go look at the amazing new fire break that's going in on the south side of town the other day. They're widening it. It's impressive. It is a significant asset in future fire issues. Unfortunately, in our canyons and in other areas, we have a major fuel load issue. As a former firefighter, when I drive by the canyons, I just shake my head right now. The amount of load is significant. We probably won't have a major fire issue in this fall. That's kind of what the inside word is, because there's so much fire... There's so much moisture in the ground and in the plants right now. But we probably will the following year, so we have some time. The weekend I spent in Palos Verdes, where I was actually raised, and I was driving down right by Point Vincent Lighthouse, and I looked over, and there were a couple hundred goats. I thought, wow, this is so cool. I've read about this. I've heard about this. When I was a student at UC Davis, I actually took the goat class. This is amazing. There they are. So I pulled over, and I started talking to them. And I've read that Laguna Beach does it, and other communities in our area do it. And I just was enamored with it. And I really think in our canyons and in the southern part of our town, where there's sharp canyons where it's difficult to get equipment in and hang crews and everything else, I think 200, 300 goats sitting there with a temporary electric fence, which is what they had in Palos Verdes, with a shepherd, which they had there, perhaps a guard dog, an Anatolian shepherd, or perhaps a mini donkey. They watch over, keep the coyotes away. I think that is a fantastic way to minimize the fuel load issues that we have in the steep areas of our town. I want to share that a little time on the Internet revealed to me that there is an endangered breed of goat called the San Clemente breed. It's from San Clemente Island. They were rescued. They were there wild for a couple hundred years. Spaniards let them go, and they developed their own goat. They're very hardy. They're resistant. They don't need a lot of water. They do really well in our environment, and they need folks to kind of watch after this breed to keep their DNA around for the future. So something to think about. I know it's kind of funny and everything, goats, but you know what? These herbivores have a role to play in our environment. They kind of mimic what deer used to do a lot of, and I think they have a role. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what they use in Europe.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Thor Johnson.
Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Thor Johnson. Thank you for your service, and it's a pleasure to speak in front of you this evening. There are two upcoming events that I would like to invite you all to, and also the whole community here in San Clemente. The first one is with Joseph Alexander on Sunday, June 2nd, at 7:00 PM here at the Community Center on Del Mar. Hubbata San Clemente and another organization that I'm affiliated with are bringing a 102-year-old Holocaust survivor to speak about how he was able to survive through 12 concentration camps, including Auschwitz. It's only $18 per person, and we have the permit for 375 people. We also offer a sponsorship package where if you purchase 10 tickets, you get recognition in the pamphlet, and we have other sponsorship levels. So it's a very good deal, but very, very important. Rabbi Slavin would like to personally... And myself would like to personally invite each and one of you all there, and complimentary to be our honorary guest. So if you'd like to take us up on that offer, I know two of you have already replied. Just please reach out to me, and we'll save you guys some tickets. The second event is with Together as One Foundation. It's a San Clemente nonprofit organization, and this is our eighth annual Knott's Berry Farm trip, which is a free trip to Knott's Berry Farm for kids affected by autism. Last year, we were fortunate enough to bring... To pay for, through our fundraising efforts, 40 kids with autism to Knott's Berry Farm. We also arrange student and young professional volunteers to take them on rides to give the parents a break if possible. So it's a great opportunity for kids affected by autism or anyone on the special needs spectrum. And I'd like to note that last year, we had more than 25 kids from San Clemente affected by autism attend to this event. So thank you very much, and thank you for your support and service.
Thank you for your information. Any other speakers?
No, no additional speakers. So next we need... Have a motion waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
Can I get a motion?
So moved to second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're not doing electronic voting?
Yeah.
What happened?
Have we got to vote?
We had a motion in a second.
But no electronic voting?
We are.
Okay, voting.
There we go.
Carries 5-0.
A wagon.
Consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action?
Any motions there? Not seeing none. We'll move on to the closed item report. City Attorney.
Close session report, City Attorney?
Thank you. The mayor and the city council met in closed session on item A1. There was direction given and no reportable action. The city council met in closed session on items A2 through 8, and there was no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Staff Communications.
Okay, next item on the agenda.
Okay, I thought you were...
I did too. I was stalling.
Out of nowhere.
Public hearings. Okay, all right. We're going to open up the public...
Let me announce it first. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first two public hearings, item 8A and 8B, we'll hear those two items together. So item 8A is a public hearing on conduit financing for the Mendocino at Talega 1 Apartments Affordable Housing Project. And item 8B is public hearing on conduit financing for the Mendocino at Talega 2 Apartments Affordable Housing Project. And we have Administrative Services Director Brower here to give a presentation.
All right, so we will open the public hearing on both items, 8A and 8B. All right, the hearing's open.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'll provide a brief background on the report and then invite the developer to come up and provide any details or answer any questions. So in 2001, the city entered into an affordable housing agreement with Jamboree Housing Corporation for the development of 186 affordable housing units located at 123 Caie Amistad in San Clemente. This project is commonly known as the Mendocino at Talega 1 and Talega 2 Apartments. It's broken out into two phases, and the original projects were completed in 2003 and 2004. The developer has now requested that the city conduct a public hearing under the Tax and Equity Financial or Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA, in connection with the proposed issuance of tax-exempt revenue bonds. And this is related to refinancing of the project. The bonds will be issued by the CMFA or California Municipal Finance Authority, and in order to enable the borrower to refinance this project, this TEFRA hearing is required by tax code. Following the public hearing, the city council would consider a resolution authorizing CMFA to proceed with the financing transaction. I'd also like to note that all financial obligations of the bond issuance would be the responsibility of the borrower and not the city. And with that, I'd like to invite up Vicky Rodriguez with Jamboree Housing and Jared Suzuki with CMFA.
You have a presentation or just...
I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, all right. Well, is there any questions about the project? I think everybody here knows about the good work that you're doing. And we'll... Maybe after there's some... Well, everybody knows about the project, where it's located. We've all been briefed on it before, but Chris, did you...
Yeah, just make a quick comment. Yeah, this isn't a question, a comment. Just... And we'll have more time to talk about this, but as the redevelopment or the remodeling goes along, please be as sensitive as you can to those lower-income residents that are there. They're particularly vulnerable in times like this of where there's sort of a life-changing situation, they're going to have to move out, they've got families, multiple jobs. Please do your best to be as sensitive and accommodating to those families as you can during this process. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd second that, I think.
Address that now?
Sure, sure, absolutely. That'd be good.
Yes, and I apologize. My name is Vicky Rodriguez. I'm the Vice President of Development with Jamboree Housing. And to speak on that point of relocation, so yes, we are... We have worked on these types of redevelopment of projects and are very sensitive to the fact that residents have lives. Their kids are going to school. You know, they work certain hours. So we actually engage a relocation consultant to help during the... No resident will actually be permanently displaced. This is just during the rehab. And the first-floor rehab of those units is a little bit more intensive, so folks will be out of their units 30 days, and then the second and third floors are about 10 days. So we will work with a relocation consultant. We'll give folks notice 60 days prior to when we'll be phasing the rehab, so they will be provided notice of when their units will... When we will start that work, we'll work with them to identify what special needs they might have. We are anticipating having some units that are vacant currently within the development, so we'll relocate folks there while the rehab, to the extent that's feasible. If not, we'll find extended, say, hotels, something close to where, you know, to the city, or if they need a special accommodation, we'll be working with a relocation consultant to make sure that, you know, we don't disrupt their lives as we're going through this rehab process.
So a lot of these people are low-income.
Yes.
And so, you know, they don't always have the resources. And so I know your organization is well-versed in working with the low-income. That's what you're about. And so I would just echo what my colleague said, is, you know, we got to make sure that to the extent we can, you know, keep them, you know, in housing nearby. If they work here in this city, they're probably not making too much money, and we want to protect our residents.
Right, exactly. And we'll be providing, you know, moving boxes, and any costs that are incurred during the relocation, we'll pay for them, for the residents. They will not be paying anything out of pocket during this period where we're coming into their units to rehab them.
All right. So go ahead.
Quick question. Issue of rent when they come back, what's the estimation on how much rents are going to rise and how will that impact the low-income?
Yes, so we will not be immediately raising the rent. I think on an annual basis, as the state allows this and our funding sources allow up to a 10% increase. But that will only occur... I think during the pandemic, there was no rent increases at all, and I think just earlier this year, there was a slight rent increase. So we... Rent increases will not occur more than once a year, and the residents will be notified and given a 90-day notice prior to that occurring.
So one other thing. The project, the money is being used to improve those locations, to keep them up to standard, up to code, and as nice as they can be, right?
Exactly. Yeah, so they're getting a refresh. They're 20 years old, so a lot of the improvements are to... For ADA accessibility, so, you know, making units larger as necessary, complying with ADA path of travel. In addition to that, all units will be refreshed in new cabinets, countertops, plumbing fixtures. You know, so they're... They continue to be in good condition, and the longevity of the units are... You know, we're a long-term owner. We're not... We've held on to this property for 20 years, and we're committing to... And they're 55 to years, so we're, you know, we're committed to keeping it up to date.
Thank you, Mr. Knoblauch.
Yeah, I just had one question. The bond proceeds will be used exclusively on the Talega 1 and 2 Mendocino projects, correct?
Yes.
No off-site expenditures for any other venue?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions, so we can...
I'm happy to make a motion.
All right.
If you close the public hearing first.
We have to close.
And then...
There are no public comments.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing on this, right?
Mayor, that would be closing both the public hearings?
Both the public hearing on both items, 8A and 8B, and then we will take item 8A and 8B separately, if you can do that.
I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 2466. Would you mind reading it?
We don't have to read it.
Fantastic.
Resolution to the record, just an ordinance.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. We've got a motion.
The motion should be for both resolutions. No, no, we have to do one at a time. Okay.
So it's a motion by Mayor Protimin Meyer, second by Councilmember Luffler.
All right.
And that carries 5-0.
Is there a motion on the second?
Sure, I'll make the same motion to adopt Resolution Number 2467.
Second?
First and second. All right, let's vote on that. First and second. All right, let's vote on that.
Just entering the vote here. Okay. And that vote carries 5-0 as well.
All right, thank you. Thank you for all you do, and thank you for your, your help with this city. All right, next item, item 8C.
Yes, and this is a bid protest hearing for the Cypress, Cypress Shore Grading Storm Drain and Sewer Lift Station and Force Main Improvements. CIP project numbers 12004 and 12210, and consideration of a resolution awarding a construction contract for the project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, approving supplemental appropriations from the Storm Drain Fund Depreciation Reserve, the Sewer Fund Connection Fee Reserve, and the Sewer Fund Depreciation Reserve, and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract.
All right, let's, let's hear from the
There we go. Some here members of the council, Dave Rehman, sort of Public Works Director. I'm here, with me is Amir O'Connor, and he'll be available to answer any detailed questions the council might have, but I have a brief presentation on this project I'd like to run through. Project is located on the south end of town in the Cypress Shores community. Whoops, I might have gone one too many. As the council is aware, I think you've all visited the site. We had a bluff failure back in the fall of 2021. There was a temporary pump system that was operated on a 24/7 basis for almost two years, and city staff built a wonderful motor control center that was put in operation in the fall of 2023 with a generator as well. And so we'll keep that in place until this project is completed. Both the sewer and storm drain systems are currently operating on a temporary basis, and rehabilitation is needed to really reestablish this community and, and get full service back up and running with low impact to the community.
Can I stop you for one second?
Sure.
Is this a public hearing? That we have to open up?
It's not a public hearing.
Okay.
It's a hearing on the bid protest.
Okay, all right.
So if you wanna go ahead and open it, that would be fine.
All right, I'll, I'll open it up, just in taking everything that you just said as part of that public.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just have a little more background, and then we'll get into the, the meat of that component of it. So in April, what, what's helped us to really facilitate this project and, and move forward in April of 2023, the landslide area was repaired through a slope remediation project by Orange County Transportation Authority. And late last fall, around October, the city had a project out to bid. Initially, we were gonna utilize existing wet well and put some caissons behind it, and it was gonna be a smaller project, but unfortunately, we had some negotiations with Coastal Commission, and the actual project looks a little different now, but that was approved on February 9th of 2024. And that involves installing a new sewer wet well, so nearly a 50-foot excavation and piping associated with it. There's an emergency bypass to the existing wet well in the event there is some sort of failure. There's a grading for, and paving for a new access road, so cities will be able to get to its generator and motor control equipment down the access road, which will also be a huge benefit to the community. It'll reestablish their beach access as well. Another big improvement is replacement of the storm drain, about 490 linear feet, and installation of six new catch basins. While we were out there over the last couple of years, we noticed there were definitely areas where drainage could be significantly improved. Whoops. The last component of the project is the replacement of about 1,200 linear feet of sewer force main. It's asbestos cement pipe. It's very brittle. We've had three failures on that pipe, one just a couple of weeks ago, so one of the first priorities of the project is to get that pipe replaced in Caie Ariana. The project was redesigned for the third time and went out to bid. City received three bids on April 23rd of 2024. The lowest responsive bid was from GMZ Engineering in the amount of $4,095,075. You should see the bid table down at the bottom. We did have one local bidder, and utilizing the local bidder discount, unfortunately, their position did not change. There was a bid protest by the second lowest bidder, K Construction, and the city received that letter shortly after the bids were opened. And what the lowest bidder, GMZ, did is they, they took their subcontractor work and assumed it was, the subcontractors were doing, like, for instance, AC paving, 100% of that AC paving work. And what they were really supposed to show in this form was what was the percentage of the overall work, because it needed to be below 49% for subcontractors. So there was no way that you could have 290% of the project being done by three subcontractors. And so we, we talked to GMZ Engineering, asked them for clarification, and they came back with this listing on their subcontractors for a total of 20.07, 20.07% of the base bid, so that's just well under the 49% of the overall project cost and percentage. Staff believes irregularity is inconsequential bid defect, and staff is recommending the city council waive and deny the bid protest and award the contract to GMZ Engineering. As far as project schedule and duration, the project is 200 working days, so approximately 10 months. The electrical materials and equipment has a lead time that shouldn't be 10 months. It should be between 14 to 16 months. There, there are a couple of components. The generator switchboard and motor control have an extremely long lead time. We have talked to the contractor. The contractor believes he can shorten that process, and the city will expedite our review and believe they can get that equipment within about 12 months. Unfortunately, this has, you know, been, become an issue with projects. You know, it's a supply chain issue. There are, Tesco is the supplier, and they, all contractors would be getting the materials from the same manufacturers, from Allen Bradley, and the same for the generator and the switchgear. I think that's, that's it for my presentation unless the council has any questions.
Any question?
Yeah. I have a question. The, number one, the Cypress Shores people have been waiting a long time for their community to get improved and for this work to be done, so I appreciate it finally, finally going forward. I was concerned when I read the staff report. The contract says that the, the contract will be performed within 120 days. It's three months. And when I look at the subcontractor's proposal, they indicate that it could take up to a year and a quarter, year and a half to get this material, and then there could still be supply chain delays. And that was with the Tesco equipment. I've been informed, I could be wrong, but I've been informed that the Tesco is not the only provider of this kind of equipment, and I'm wondering if, if, why the, why the delay? Now, you've mentioned it would be done in 10 months, so are you modifying the contract from
Yeah.
three months to 10 now?
No, the, the contract was actually 10 months. The original was six months. Back in October of last year, the original project that was out had 120 working days, so that would have been six months.
Is the, is the attachment on, attachment to, is that the contract that you'll be entering into with the successful bidder if we reject the, the bid appeal?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch that. I was looking for
Page 13, there's a contract that says attachment number two with this contract with the city and the successful bidder, GMZ. And my question is, on article two, it says the work will be done within 120 days. That's three months. Is that now being modified to 10 months? Or is that, is this the contract that you, that, that you plan on entering into with this contractor?
That, that could have been a editorial mistake. The duration should be, the correct number of days is 200 working days, which is
So it's not 120 working days, it's 200 working days?
200 working days.
Okay, well, that still puts the equipment, the Tesco equipment out by a year and a quarter, close to a year and a half. That seems problematic to me, but I could be missing something. Is Tesco, and that was the bid by Tesco, the subcontractor?
So, so they're, they're really, they're subcontractor and supplier. And so they're supplying the equipment, but they're not the manufacturer. So the equipment that they're gonna be getting, for instance, is Allen Bradley for the motor control center. So no matter what contractor we were to go to or suppliers, they, they all need to go to Allen Bradley to, to build the motor control center, for instance, and the same thing for the switchboard. So regardless, unless someone has it off the shelf, the, the timeframe is, is gonna take within that, for at least that piece of equipment, that 14 to 16 months, but hopefully shorter. We think we can shorten that duration if we can get the submittals in quickly from the contractor, and the city provides a quick turnaround on those submittals.
Okay, well, my, my concern still is that we, we, we have a contract now that says work will be done within 220 days, which was what, six, seven months? The subcontractor who bid the contract that we're relying on says it's gonna take us a year and a quarter, year and a half.
Yeah.
And that, that, help me, help me get my head around why this is a good thing and to sure that this will be done.
And unfortunately, it's, it's part of the coming out of COVID with the supply chain issues. We're seeing that not only in our agency, but others as well, and so we're reaching out to others local to see how they're handling it. It would be nice to know from our, you know, contractors that are potentially bidding the project is something we have to work out with them, to make sure we understand what these supply chain issues are before we're issuing our bid contracts, and then maybe in those cases, we're doing a, a multi-phase. For instance, this project, we want to get the lion's share of the work done within the four, first four to five months. Get the road paved, get the area back to normal, so Cypress Shore can start enjoying their access, enjoying their site. And then, you know, six months later, we'll be coming in. It'll be a minor impact to the community where the electrical equipment will be installed, but they'll still have full access to their beach and be able to utilize their site.
So the, the, the completion of the electric switch controls for the pump station is totally separate than the construction for undergrounding the drains and so forth. So Cypress Shores, the park there, that can be completed this summer, and then everything just simply stays dormant until the electrical station gets plugged in, and, and 120 days or a year and a half whenever the equipment comes, and then you can throw the switch and everything's functional.
That's correct, and then we'll get rid of that Connex box that we have there and the generator. So that'll be the biggest impact, is we'll have Connex box and a generator that would be out there, and we'll put, we'll put a fence around it, get that area fenced in, so at least the community can start enjoying their area and remove that existing fence that's blocking the above ground, above-ground pipe that's out there now. So it'll be a huge benefit back to the community.
So, so you're confident that this is being expedited as quickly as possible, and that the Tesco equipment isn't gonna, no one else can do it quicker, I guess, is my concern?
Unless someone has the equipment off the shelf somewhere, which is highly unlikely. Just even ourselves, we've, the city, we've ordered motor control centers for critical equipment because we know the lead time is so far out. And what we don't want, for instance, is one of our sewer lift stations that takes 2/3 of the city's sewer flow. We've actually ordered spare motor control centers for those as part of COVID. So we, this, this has been a challenge, and it's a major supply chain issue. We're having the same issues here at City Hall with the switchgear there as well for our generator. That's what's taking so long on that project.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
Let me, let me ask just a brief question. There's probably only one manufacturer of this equipment that's needed. Did all three bidders have the same manufactured equipment that they're, in this three separate bids? So they all use, acquiring the same?
We, we have Allen Bradley as our manufacturer, which is our standard for our motor control center, so that's equipment that staff knows how to work on, and it
So whoever got the
We're standardized with that.
They'd have the same delay.
Right, they have to go to the same supplier.
All right.
Or not supplier, but manufacturer.
Manufacturer. All right, that was my only question. Any other questions? All right, so do we take our comments?
We do not have any public comments.
All right, oh, wait, do we have a?
Mr. Mayor, you need, you need to ask whether the bid protester wants to speak?
Yes, yes, I
Is he here?
Is the bid protester here and want to speak?
We reached out to him, and, and they said they had not planned on being here, so if, if they're not here, that's
Yeah.
All right.
The nature of their, their bid protest is a simple misunderstanding of the documents. They've been explained, and it sounds rational, so I, I can't support eliminating the, the, can't support approving the, the rejection of the bid, so.
All right, so
One more thing. You should also confirm whether the apparent low bidder is here and whether they want to speak.
Yeah, is, well, yeah, is there any other parties, or interested parties that have? I don't think, I don't see any. I think I know everybody in the audience, so. And there's no one raising their hand. So, so we'll close the public hearing then on this matter? And we'll close the public hearing and entertain a, a motion.
I will make a motion to adopt resolution number 2472.
Do I second? Oh, I'll, I'll second it.
Oh, sorry. Did I press the motion?
I got you.
Yeah, okay.
All right. All right, let's take a vote then.
Let's see here. It's froze on me. We've got Ann Meyer, second by Cabral. I'm gonna record that, and let's see if we can start voting. There you go. That should have reopened it.
It didn't come up on mine, but I'll say yes.
Okay, I will vote yes for you, and I will record, and it carries 5-0.
All right.
Thank you. We look forward to restoring that community.
Thank you. Yeah, no, we need to do that as soon as possible. I've been, they've been waiting long enough, and I think everybody here is, understands the need to get this done as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. I don't have any public comments.
All right, then, someone wanna make a motion to approve the consent?
I'm moved to accept consent calendar.
Second?
All right, all those in favor?
I am, I'm having trouble with mine coming up on my screen, so I'll, I'll have to, to voice vote.
It came out.
No, I think I must have pressed a button or something. I'm trying to get back to
Are you a yes, Mayor Protem and Meyer?
Yes.
I will vote for you.
So vote for you. She has ability to vote for any of this.
That carries 5-0. And, let's see, moving on.
All right, let's
Oral communications, part two. I was just gonna say we don't have any speaker
Oh, wait, we do have a speaker.
Right here. Tony Rubellino?
Mr. Rubellino, you're up.
All right, the California Rifle and Pistol Association puts out a magazine for its members, and the name of the magazine is Firing Line. You'll reference the picture here. It's the May-June 2024 issue. And circled at the bottom, there are reports and updates on local action. Next slide. The table of content shows that there's a page that's dedicated to local issues, and if you'll reference, that is put together by Tiffany Chauvratte. She's the managing attorney at Michelle and Associates. And for those of the people that are watching that are not familiar, they are essentially the leading Second Amendment firm in the nation. They literally wrote the book on gun laws in California. Next slide. Well, look at that. City of San Clemente made the page. So description here, I'll read it. Passed a lock storage ordinance in March. The city attorney and mayor pro tem, that's Mark, wrongly advised the city council that they would be safe from legal expenses because they were covered under SB 1327. This law was overturned last year, and CRPA legal team won that case. There is no protection for the city in this case. CRPA attorney sent a letter to the city of San Clemente regarding their grave error and demanding that they rescind their decision because under Bruin, it is likely that the mandatory lock storage would not stand. SP 1327 was a fee-shifting mechanism based off of Texas abortion law. Newsom created this as a political gimmick to take a jab at Texas legislation. It was struck down by a federal judge. Next slide. Next slide. Moms Demand Action was leading the charge for this at both the City of San Clemente and Capistrano Unified. Uh, on the left, you'll see text messages with Rick regarding that from, uh, I believe her name's Erin Corn, with Moms Demand, and, uh, Rick made a comment, we have a couple of councilmen who probably are afraid of the NRA, but I believe three votes are pretty secure. Well, he was right. Um, let's see. On the right, we've got an public record that was obtained from Capistrano Unified, because the presentation on this matter actually got taken away, uh, at the last minute, and if you look, last night, he made a veiled threat to Mayor Duncan at a council meeting, this is Erin Corn, the same individual, uh, gosh, that sounds like an outright lie, made no such, uh, threat, and, uh, that's just absurd to even think that. Next slide. Councilman Chris Duncan said the ordinance was in full compliance with the Second Amendment. Wrong! And then Mayor Protem, Mark Hu, the high school teacher who decided to play attorney that evening, decided that SB 1327 was, um, going to allow them to make gun laws. One little problem, Mark, you failed to mention that SB 1327 was already ruled unconstitutional and overturned, so now we've got a predicament in our hands. I would encourage everybody to address this matter so that we can get this taken care of, please do not tap the city coffers to fight this, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Yeah, I, since those comments were directed and some of the things were put that were misstatements, a portion of SB 1327 was, uh, ruled unconstitutional, not the entirety of the law, and the entirety of the law that we quoted and utilized to make that resolution was in fact upheld, so.
All right, thank you.
Well, and just the other, and, and I, I think Mr. Rubellino is, is probably accurate in most of the things that he, he, at least in some con- context, but I'm just curious, I have not seen a letter demanding that we change our ordinance or drop our ordinance that, or that we're going to be sued. I'd like to know if that has happened, because I haven't seen such, such a letter that demands that we, that we rescind the ordinance or be sued, uh, so I, I'm just asking if we've received one, I'd just like to see that letter, because, because that would be concerning.
We can get you a copy of the correspondence that was from the legal firm. I don't, I don't want to quote it, it, I don't know that it was a threat of litigation, it was information about the, the bill and how it had been rescinded, but I don't want to, I'd rather give it to you than quote from
All right, let's do that.
It's been a little while, I don't have it in memory.
Perfect, thank, thank you, I appreciate it. All right, uh, next, uh
Future agenda items.
Anything to report on future agenda items? Mr. City Manager, now?
Commission and committee updates?
Nothing?
Council Subcommittee Updates?
I don't think there's anything we give them on our report. City Attorney?
I have nothing to report, except it's a pleasure to serve the City of San Clemente.
Thank you very much. City Manager?
She stole my opportunity to, no, I'm just kidding. Um, we do have one contract with Coastal Frontiers providing coastal engineering and consulting services in an amount not to exceed 25,000, and that is the only contract for tonight. Uh, they are doing coastal work, they're, they're working with our coastal administrator on coastal engineering and some of the things that we're doing. And, for instance, they're helping us with SCOOP and some other, some other items, so.
All right, uh, let's, uh, someone want to make a
8:00 PM, Steve, 8:00 PM.
You're making a motion to adjourn? Or you want to wait 15, 16 minutes?
Oh, yeah, you want to hang out, how's it going, guys?
All right, yeah, do I hear a motion? Someone
I'm going to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, aye, I think unanimous. Yes, Rick.
I'll read it for you, if you'd like.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, that, that was a, a motion by Councilmember Loeffler, second by Mayor Protem and Meyer, carried 5-0 to adjourn at 7:46 PM. The next regular city council meeting is scheduled to take place on June 4th, 2024. Close session will begin at 5:00 PM, and the regular business meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. The meeting will take place in the council chambers located at 910 Cali Negotio Second Floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, we need a vote, right?
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, here, she put the vote up?
Unanimous.
It's unanimous, right? Do I hear ayes from everybody?
It's not coming up on mine, so
Yeah, it's not, okay.
All right.
I don't know, I broke it.